Secretaries, are we good?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. I believe, um, Rep. Deskitado is not yet in the call. And he also, ano, told us to have an acting sec- Assistant Secretary as of the moment.
Okay. Do we have, do you have someone to act as acting secret- Acting Assistant Secretary?
I believe Rep. Caminade would be okay to be the acting secretary, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I see Rep. Caminade has sent the reaction to the meeting, so. Okay, we'll take that. We'll take that. Thank you very much, Representative Caminade. Okay, it's one oh one. I'll be calling to session now. Calling to order. Good afternoon, Representatives. Seventh regular session is hereby called to order. Um, please, uh, pay attention for the screen for our opening ceremonies. Almighty, loving, and merciful Father, Creator of everything and source of wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. We adore you for your infinite wisdom and power. We praise you for you are the only one who can direct our lives. We thank you for all the gifts you have bestowed on us, your children. Without you, we are nothing. You are the ultimate teacher. You teach and instruct us in the way of life and guide us into your will. May we teach others with the wisdom and love that we receive from you. Remind us that our teaching is an act of worship to you. Amen. Bismillah, Rahman, Rahim. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil Alamin. Rahman, Rahim. Malikiyaumiddin. Iya kan abuduwa iya kan astain. Eh dinas seratal mustaqim. Seratal ladina an'amta alaihim. Gairil maghdubi alaihim walad dholin. Amin. Rabbana dalamna wa ilayka tawakalna wa ilab- wa ilayka annabna wa ilayka almasir. Rabbana atinapi dunya hasana wafil akhirati hasana tawakinata bannar. Rabbana waj'alna muslimaini lakaw minzuriati na omatam muslimatan lak. Wa'ari na manasika na watub alaina ina kantata wabarrahim. Rabbana dalamna anpusana wa ilam tagpela na watarhamna lanakunamna minalhaserin. Rabbana takabalmiina ina kandasamin alim watub alaina ina kantata wabarrahim. Birahmati kay arhamurrahimin walhamdulillah. Okay, thank you, InfoTech. Proceeding forward, the Chair will give the floor to the Secretaries to conduct roll call.
Apologies, Mr. Chair. Am I audible?
Yes, Madam Secretary.
Okay. College of Agriculture, Representative Ina?
Present.
Representative Inofario? College of Arts and Sciences, Representative Bitong. Representative Deskitado? Representative Dizon? Representative Hakoba?
Present.
Representative Hamera?
Present.
Representative Mohamed?
Present.
Representative Tevez?
Present.
Representative Valicer? College of Business Administration, Representative Baiz? Representative Chiung?
Present.
Representative Esteliosso?
Present.
Representative Ozawa?
Present.
Representative Villaflores?
Present.
College of Computer Studies, Representative Rosell?
Present.
Representative Gunop?
Present.
College of Engineering and Design, Representative Almagro?
Present.
Representative Balbon? Representative Balbon? Representative Arbon?
Present.
College of Education, Representative Isada? Representative Isada? Representative Brandon?
Present.
College of Law, Representative Makarubo?
Present.
Representative Maputi?
Present.
College of Mass Communication, Representative Malolot?
Present.
Representative Samson?
Present.
College of Nursing, Representative Ragay?
Present.
Representative Rowo?
Present.
College of Performing and Visual Arts, Representative Tamaio? Representative Tamaio? Representative Kalasang? Divinity School, Representative Ernasho?
Present.
Representative Umambak? Representative Umambak? Graduate School, Representative Amante?
Present.
Institute of Clinical Laboratory Sciences, Representative Kalumpang is present. Representative Caminade?
Present.
Institute of Environmental and Marine Sciences, Representative Hoxon? Representative Valle?
Present.
Institute of Rehabilitative Sciences, Representative Andres? Representative Lopez?
Present.
Junior High School, Representative Abbas? Representative Abbas? Representative Cabanas?
Present.
Representative Hernandez?
Present.
Representative Lorente?
Present.
Representative Visoro?
Present.
Medical School, Representative Chavez? Representative Chavez? Representative Gorecho?
Present.
School of Public Affairs and Governance, Representative Makahi?
Present.
Representative Minalang?
Present.
Senior High School, Representative Cadiz?
Present.
Representative Cárdenas?
Present.
Representative Depilio? Representative Depilio? Representative Ferrer? Representative Ferrer? Representative Lim? Representative Narciso? Representative Narciso? Representative Rinasha? Representative Rinasha? Mr. Chair, there are forty-seven representatives who responded to the call.
Thank you, Secretaries. With forty-seven responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Moving forward, we'll now be reading our Order of Business for this seventh regular session. First, we have call to order, opening ceremonies, roll call, reading of communication letters consisting of excuse letters, approval of the previous minutes from the sixth regular session, September twenty-one to the twenty-five, reports of the student assembly officers with one entitled the Student Check-In Heavy Rains and Earthquake Aftermath Survey and the Administration's response to be given by yours truly, uh, reports of constitutional committees consisting of the Committee on Resolutions and the Committee on Audit, reports of the student assembly committees, with the one coming from the Ad-Hoc National Service Training Program Affairs Committee, and our discussion for the agenda of the day. We have one student assembly sponsorship request from Project Art Reach Drawing and Clay Workshop from the Solomon University Fine Arts Department, budget proposals from S U S G Educational Services Committee for their study space initiative, office supplies for S U S G Resolutions Committee, Project Hunahuna Amid its burden we thrive from S U S G Health Committee, first aid get supplies from S U S G Health Committee and CPR caravan donation from S U S G Health Committee. And we have resolutions. First is a resolution establishing a committee on appropriations as a permanent committee under the student assembly. A resolution institutionalizing the institutionalizing a Solomon University student government student internship financial aid program through the S U S G Educational Services Committee. A resolution amending resolution number twenty-three, series of twenty-four to twenty-five, or simply a resolution implementing an annual university-wide first aid response training for volunteers to the S U S G Health, Health Team. And a resolution requesting the Solomon University Administration through the Facilities Management and Administrative Services to conduct an inspection and structural evaluation of the College of Performing Visual Arts Fine Arts Department Building, also known as Dongwon. And last on the agenda is the election of Ad-Hoc Constitutional Amendments Committee consisting of eighteen members. Other matters, announcements, adjournment, and closing ceremonies. Are there any motions to adopt the Order of Business for the day? Representative Villaflores, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt the Order of Business.
Are there any seconds to the motion?
Second.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Are there any objections to the motion to adopt the Order of Business for this session? Are there any discussions? Going once, going twice? Chair hears none? Representative Ozawa, your hand raised?
Uh, thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, I have a parliamentary inquiry po. Uh, can we amend the section for the resolutions by moving one resolution up? Uh, yeah, adjusting the resolution?
Yes, you're free to make the motion.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the, uh, fourth resolution be moved up to be the second resolution po.
The copper resolution?
Yes.
Okay. So it will be after the Committee on Appropriations Resolution, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any second to that motion?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any objections or discussion? Going once, going twice? Chair hears none. Amendment is carried. Apologies. So with that, are there further discussions? Going once, going twice? Chair hears none. All those in favor of adopting this Order of Business with its amendment, please raise your hand. The Chair will be the one to lower, uh, to lower your hands after voting, so please keep it up and um, be mindful of that, please. Thank you.
Thirty-eight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The Chair will, the Chair will be the one to lower the hands. All those not in favor of the amendment, oh, sorry, all those not in favor of the adoption of the Order of Business? Going once, going twice? Chair sees none. Any abstentions? Okay. With thirty-eight in favors, you're not in favor, this motion is carried and the Order of Business is adopted as amended. The Chair notices that there are only thirty-eight votes, but forty-seven responded, responded to the call. The Chair is reminding the representatives to please vote on motions and to please pay attention to our session. Thank you, Representatives. Moving forward, we have our reading of communication letters. The Chair received five excuse letters before the deadline. Yes, okay. Received, yeah, we received five excuse letters before the deadline, so uh, those that were sent after the deadline will be read in the next session. So our first letter. Okay, our first letter comes from Representative Ernasho from the Divinity School requesting uh, ex- uh, excuse for their absence during the sixth regular session. Are there any motions to accept? Representative Villaflores, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to accept the excuse letter sent by Representative Ernasho.
Are there any seconds?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any discussions? Going once, going twice? Chair hears none. Uh, excuse letters accepted. Next letter comes from Representative Visoro of Junior High School. Requesting similarly, similar, uh, excuse for absence during the sixth regular session. Are there any motions? Representative Ina is recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I'd, I'd like to accept Representative Visoro's excuse letter.
Okay, it's been a motion to accept. Are there any seconds?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any discussions? Going once, going twice? Chair hears none. Excuse letters accepted. The next excuse letter, next excuse letter comes from Representative Narciso. Are there any motions? Representative Gunop, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to accept the excuse letter of Representative Narciso.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Are there any discussions? Going once, going twice? Chair hears none. Excuse letters accepted. Apologies. Next excuse letter. We have Representative Depilio. Are there any, are any motions? Representative Villaflores.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to accept the excuse letter sent by Representative Depilio.
Any seconds?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussions? Going once, going twice? Chair hears none. Excuse letters accepted. Apologies. Last excuse letter comes from Representative Deskitado. Are there any motions to accept? Representative Dizon, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to accept the excuse that you're sent by Mr. Deskitado.
Second. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussions? Going once, going twice? Chair hears none. Excuse letters accepted. Thank you, Representatives. That concludes the reading of our communication letters. Once again, those excuse letters that were sent after the deadline will be read in the next session. Next on our Order of Business, we have approval of previous minutes from the sixth regular session. Let the Chair though open the minutes first. Okay. Are there any motions to, to adopt the minutes of the previous session? Representative Gunop, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt the minutes of the sixth regular session.
Are there any seconds?
Second.
Okay, thank you. For, are there any discussions? Are, are needed amendments? The Chair will give about one minute for, for the representatives to see if they need to make amendments. Representative Ina, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make an amendment in the fourth section. Item, line item B number three and four. The spelling of my co-reps', um, family name.
Okay. We'll take that as a technical amendment. Secretaries, please take note. Section, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's the correct line. Thank you. Further, further amendments needed? Going once, going twice? Okay. With that, all those in favor of adopting uh, these minutes with, with its amendments, please raise your hand.
There are thirty-five votes, thirty-six votes, Mr. Chair.
Thirty-six?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thirty-seven as of now.
Okay. Thirty-seven. All those not in favor? Okay. With thirty-seven in favors, you're not in favor, the minutes of the previous session is accepted. With its amendments. Thank you, again, Representatives. So moving to our next order, next item in the Order of Business, we have our first report, which is a report of the student assembly officers to be given by yours truly, and for this, the Chair would like to relinquish his seat to the Speaker for temporary, so he may give his report. Are there any objections? Going once, going twice? Chair hears none. Sitting seat is relinquished to the Speaker for temporary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following the Order of Business, we have the report of our Assembly Officers, Student Check-In, Heavy Rains and Earthquake Aftermath Survey, and the Administration's response. The Chair would like to summon Representative Amante for this report.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So the Speaker would like, oh, sorry, the Speaker would like to give, uh, his narrative report regarding uh, the Assembly's actions after actions and response after the heavy rain and earthquake which took place on September thirty. So I won't be reading everything, but I'll just be giving the general gist of this. So following the surge of social media posts on Facebook and other social media platforms on the effects of the rain and earthquake happening all around the city, Representative Ozawa from CBA contacted me and offered that, uh, survey would be made for the Assembly to give out to the students so that we may assess their individual situations and make recommendations to the Administration and to collaborate with the, uh, the executive branch on how to how to handle the situation and to help students if needed. So with this, I brought it forward to the, my co-officers and majority, or you know, we unanimously agreed to this initiative and immediately we got to work doing it. So by one twenty AM, the survey, the survey was published. It was entitled Student Check-In Heavy Rains and Earthquake Aftermath. It was posted on both the Facebook and Instagram pages of the student assembly. So near three AM, after coordinating with the President and Vice President, they had pledged to help us in our initiative by creating their own post and had their executive team further bring, further bring out the survey to their constituents and their fellow students, so to help reach, to help increase the reach of our survey. Then at nine fifteen, after we garnered three hundred forty-two respondents, I created a summary report of the of the survey, which you can see in Appendix A. Then after that, they created a letter to be sent to the the university president, which included a strong recommendation to suspend classes. And so, so that thorough structural inspect, inspections may be taken. You may see that letter in Appendix B. Then at ten fifty-six, President Malala was able to hand-deliver the office, hand-deliver to the office the, the letter. Then at nine, at two oh six PM, after, after the university president and other co- other administrative heads were able to meet, this is the response that they, that they gave us. So the gist of, the gist of the response is that our request was not, was effectively not granted because our request was not addressed in the response, so it's safe to say that our response, of course, is not granted. But they reassured us that the physical infrastructure is generally safe and the trees around the campus were being, were being inspected, and that they would be devoting much of that day to assessing the damage and integrity of the buildings on the campus. So with that, on behalf of the Assembly Officers, we'd like to thank you, Representatives, for your cooperation and your coordination with us on this and looking out for the welfare of your constituents. Because again, we were doing all this work way past working hours, office hours, and well into past midnight, but a lot of you are still very willing to help out in this and to look out for your stu-, your constituents. Our sincerest gratitude also goes out to our President and Vice President in the S U S G for helping us in our, in our initiative and expanding our reach and allowing us to garner more than three hundred respondents. It's a testament to both the branch's commitment to the welfare of the students and to working together. Major thanks as well goes to Representative Ozawa for initiating the creation and publishing of the survey. It's, it's something that we, not all of us would have considered doing at such a late hour, but the fact that Representative Ozawa had the initiative to do this, it's very much appreciated and should be recognized. Our thanks as well goes to Infomedia and Technicals Committee for creating and posting the pub mat in such a timely manner, especially given that the assignment was given past midnight, and our secretary, Representative Kalumpang, for having this initiative to create a good caption, even though I, I didn't directly ask her to. So the success of this initiative is credited to you guys, and you deserve the recognition. And on the last note, like to thank the university administration for taking measures to assess the structural integrity of the buildings and trees. Although the request wasn't granted, we, we'd like to give, where they still give reassurance to us that they were taking steps to ensure safety of the students. So that's, that concludes my report. So once again, just a general thank you to everyone, and we're looking forward to more ways we can help the students. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you for that, Mr. Speaker. Are there any que- inquiries from the floor? Going once, going twice? Chair hears none. Chair would like to relinquish their presiding seat to the Speaker of the Student Assembly. Are there any objections? Chair here is none, the presiding seat is relinquished.
Thank you, Madam Speaker for temporary. Proceeding forward, we have our reports from the Constitutional Committees. First, coming from the Committee on Resolutions, the Chair summons the Committee on Resolutions to give their report.
Good afternoon, honorable Assembly. May I ask if I'm audible lang? Okay, so, good afternoon, honorable Assembly. I am Zuri's Bongansiso. The current point of order, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bongansiso?
Oh my god, apologies, I heard it wrong.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, no worries.
Okay, so, may I proceed, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Representative.
Okay, thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. So, good day, honorable Assembly. The Committee on Resolutions will now be presenting the second committee report. So, first, we'll be starting off with the previously reported resolutions progress status from Resolution One to Three. So, Resolution Number One, Two, and Three were previously given update last August one, twenty twenty-five by the Resolutions Committee, stating that the Chairperson of the SUSG Finance Committee had reviewed the resolutions and included them as a basis for their appropriations. A current update, last October three, twenty twenty-five, both Resolution One and Two are already been incorporated in the first semester appropriations, which have been approved by the Student Assembly. While Resolution Number Three has been adopted in the first semester appropriations, which have been approved by the Student Assembly. And for Resolution Number Four, it has been implemented. Now, for the previous resolutions approved and progress status, we'll begin with the third regular session, Resolution Number Five Progress Status. A resolution institutionalizing a resolution compliance audit through the SUSG Resolutions Committee. So, this was approved by the SUSG President on August six, twenty twenty-five. This was submitted to the SUSG President for approval on August six, twenty twenty-five, and approved on August twelve, twenty twenty-five, and was received by the SUSG Resolutions Committee in August thirteen, twenty twenty-five. And as of the latest update of October two, twenty twenty-five, the SUSG Resolutions Committee will begin full implementation next week. For the fourth special session, which is Resolution Number Six Progress Status, Resolution Number Six was marked urgent by the committee. This is a resolution implementing environmental clearance for organizational events, sponsors, and concessionaires under the Student Organizations and Activities Division, or SOAD, and Committee on Student Organizations or COMSO on through on through the Sileman University Student Government Environment Committee and institutionalization thereof. So, this was submitted to the SUSG President for approval and was immediately signed on August thirteen, twenty twenty-five. This was then received by the SUSG Resolutions Committee on August fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Then, this was forwarded to the SUSG Environment Committee on August nineteen, twenty twenty-five. And as of the latest update of October two, twenty twenty-five, the SUSG Resolutions Committee stated that the SUSG Environment Committee has yet to implement the resolution. For the fourth regular session, which are resolutions Number Seven to Eight Progress Status, Resolution Number Seven, a resolution requesting the Sileman University Administration through the Facilities Management and Administrative Services, or FMAS, to update the campus maps across campus. So, this was approved. This was sent for approval to the SUSG President on September ten, twenty twenty-five, and was signed on September nineteen, twenty twenty-five. This was then received by the SUSG Resolutions Committee on September twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And as of the current latest update for October two, twenty twenty-five, SUSG Resolutions Committee has yet to forward the resolution to the concerned office, as committee operations were temporarily suspended last September fifteen to twenty, fifteen to twenty-six, twenty twenty-five due to the midterm examinations. However, the resolution is scheduled to be processed, which was processed October three, twenty twenty-five. As per Resolution Number Eight, a resolution requesting the Committee on Student Organizations or COMSO in coordination with the Student Organizations and Activities Division, SOAD, to reevaluate the organizational points system. On September eight, twenty twenty-five, the Committee on Resolutions submitted the resolution for the approval of the SUSG President, and was approved on September ten and was, and on the same day, the SUSG President signed the resolution. And on September ten, the SUSG Resolutions Committee received the resolution and immediately forwarded it to COMSO. And for the latest update of October two, twenty twenty-five, the SUSG Resolutions Committee provided an update that the committee has yet to confirm the implementation of the resolution from the concerned office. And for the fifth regular session, which are Resolutions Nine, Ten, and Eleven Progress Status, Resolution Number Nine, a resolution institutionalizing permanent committees of the Student Assembly. So, this was passed to the SUSG President for approval on September eight, twenty twenty-five, and was signed on September twenty-eight, September eighteen, twenty twenty-five, and was signed on September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, was later than received by the Resolutions Committee on September nine, twenty twenty-five. And for the latest update, on October two, twenty twenty-five, SUSG Resolutions Committee has yet to forward the resolution for implementation to the SUSG Student Assembly. However, the resolution is scheduled to be processed on October three, twenty twenty-five. And for Resolution Number Ten, a resolution requesting the Sileman University Library to adopt and recognize the College of Performing and Visual Arts Music Learning Resource Center as part of the university library system as a satellite library. This was submitted to the SUSG President for approval on September eighteen, and was signed. And the resolution was signed on September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, and was received by the Resolutions Committee on September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five. And as of writing, on October two, twenty twenty-five, the latest update, due to the suspension, SUSG Resolutions Committee has yet to forward the resolution to the concerned office. Similar, it was processed last October three, twenty twenty-five. And for Resolution Number Eleven, a resolution institutionalizing a Sileman University Student Government Sports Fund for the Student Athletes of Sileman University through the SUSG Sports and Recreation Committee. October two, twenty twenty-five, has yet to forward the resolution to the SUSG Sports and Recreation Committee. And similar to seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and for twelve as well, it will be processed, it was processed, or the process began last October three, twenty twenty-five. Lastly, for the sixth regular session, Resolution Number Twelve Progress Status, a resolution establishing a SUSG establishment and service provider blacklist database through the SUSG Marketing Committee. So, the Committee on Resolutions submitted the resolution to the SUSG President for approval last September twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, and was signed last September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, and the Resolutions Committee received the resolution last September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five. And for the latest update, last October two, twenty twenty-five, the Resolutions Committee has yet to forward the resolution to the SUSG Marketing Committee. And similar with seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, it began processed last October three, twenty twenty-five. And that would be all for the second committee report of COR.
Thank you, Chairperson Manalang. Are there any inquiries for the Committee on Resolutions? Going once, going twice? Chairs none, thank you Committee on Resolutions for giving your report. The next Constitutional Committee to give their report is the Committee on Audit. The Chair summons the Committee on Audit to give their report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, honorable representatives. Today, I'll be presenting the first Committee on Audit Report for the first semester. So, they will, as of October five, the Committee audited three liquidation reports and then reviewed one communication letter sent by the Student the SUSG Environment Committee. I will be tackling first with the first two liquidation reports which was sent from the, by the Student Assembly. So, we have only minor comments on the liquidation report, and we already addressed this to the Student Assembly Treasurer. So, they did not include like a PR numbering in the receipts, PR means page reference. So, that wasn't a big problem for this liquidation report, because it wasn't that long. But for future references, we advise that the Student Assembly Treasurer include PR references, page references, so that it will be easier for the committee and ultimately the BFO to review your liquidation report. And that also applies to the second liquidation report sent by the Student Assembly. And for the first liquidation report, particularly the July Assembly Liquidation, the requisition form must be included in the, as an appendix to the liquidation report, because the Student Assembly Treasurer only included the receipt given by the BFO, but that doesn't include the line items or the services available by the Student Assembly. So, we suggest that the apart from the receipt, the requisition will also be included in the liquidation report. For the statement of expenses for Hibalag, we commend the Executive Committee for for providing a well-organized liquidation report despite it being a long and very heavy document, we commend them for it being well-organized. The committee while auditing the document, we face little to no, we face little to no problems with it. Their receipts were on point, and then we only have this one recommendation. When it comes to talent fees, we recommend that aside from, to make certain that the acknowledgement receipt must include the name, and then the signature, and then a statement from the performer that they indeed received the agreed-upon amount for their talent fee, and then a phone number, so that aside from us, we can contact them and the Business and Finance Office to verify if they did indeed receive the amount that was agreed upon. Following that, the communication letter was intended to request for any reimbursement from the Environment Committee, because the situation was during the regular session when they presented this, their budget proposal, they assured the floor that the SU Co-op will will accept requisition forms. However, upon after the approval of that budget proposal, and then the committee went to the SU Co-op, they were surprised to know that there was a sudden policy change that SU Co-op will not be accepting any more requisitions from the university because of past transaction where there was this huge amount that was supposed to be paid through requisition, through a request for payment, but unfortunately, it was not done because of policy changes by the BFO. And it was not from the SUSG, it was just from another organization. And they are being wary, so that's why they did not accept the requisition form from the SUSG Environment Committee. So, they ended up shouldering the amount. And we recommended that they double-check next time when it comes to consultation, especially now where the university is undergoing policy changes, so we must not rely on past systems. We must be, we must make certain on our consultations. And for our findings and approval, the committee approved the committee approved all three liquidation reports, with the condition that the recommendations be promptly incorporated in their following liquidation reports. And we also, and the committee also approved the communication letter, which was a request for reimbursement, also with the condition that the that the Executive Committee take note of their lapses and learn from it. That will be all, Mr. Chair. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Chairperson Azoa. Are there any inquiries to the Committee on Audit? Going once, going twice? Chairs none. Thank you, Chairperson Azoa. Thank you, Committee on Audit. Thank you to our Constitutional Committees for giving their reports. Next report we have is our reports of Student Assembly Committees from our Ad-Hoc National Service Training Program Affairs Committee. The Chair summons the NSDP Affairs Committee to give their report.
Okay, am I audible, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Representative, you're good.
Okay, so, good afternoon to the honorable Assembly. We are here to present from the Committee on National Service Training Program Affairs, our second committee report. So, the subject for it will be the follow-up actions and implemented changes in the NSDP program, specifically on the LPS component in response to the student grievances, as well as consultation with consultation meeting with the committee following our consultation with the NSDP program. So, on September eleven, twenty twenty-five, at two PM in Katedunan Hall, the Ad-Hoc Committee on National Service Training Program Affairs, referred as the Committee, had a face-to-face meeting with the NSDP Coordinator, Dr. Earl Jude Altiyope, and it was a formal meeting that was called in response to the formal grievance raised by former Representative Sumoso. And with that, we were able to relay the communication letter to them. And during this discussion, it was basically an update on the current situation and if the issues that were raised from the previous school year was addressed. So, the following are the changes in the LPS in response to the grievances and concerns raised from the previous school year. So, for the, there was a structural change in LPS, specifically the coordinators and advisors. So, there is now a new advisor in LPS. Before, it was, if I remember correctly, it was Mam Lorlu, but now it was replaced by Mam Daya May Balapit. Is the new appointed LPS advisor, assisted by Sir Renier MacPillie, and as a student assistant as well. So, only the LPS was changed, like, long advisors, where there was no structural change when it came to CWTS and RSC. And then, Sir Tiyope is still the overall NSDP Coordinator for this school year. And then, we went on one by one with each concern that was raised in the communication letter. Number one was the clarification on fees. So, the NSDP Coordinator initially clarified that he was unaware of the meanings in LPS, and that he was really grateful to the Student Assembly that they were able to communicate those issues, and they were able to address it after the end of the school year last year. So, in terms of accountability and transparency, the concerns of the students were that there was a lot of unnecessary equipment or purchases that were needed to be made, and it was just a financial burden to the dependents. So, with that, they changed it now. Before, last, the LPS, we were required to have two t-shirts, but now they changed it to one NSDP shirt, and there are no longer bags or additional units or additional equipments that the students need to purchase. So, ilan lang ang gigas ko on is the NSDP shirts. And when it came to when it came to fees or mga bayar nun sa students, they clarified na, an issue that was raised was there was no receipts, then a hat, if there was ever purchases. and a hat if there was ever purchases. But, um, Dr. Tiyope clarified that they can't make receipt, Jod. And may, maybe that was a problem kuna pa because sa BFO, only BFO is the one who can authorize official receipt. So, what they can do nalang in terms ng ano ipumobayad kaya sa NSDP shirts is that they, they have a list of those who came, yeah, because they can't issue receipt. And then, we also raised thatong concern when it came to the makeup session because a problem last school year was that makeup sessions were expensive in the sense that students actually had to pay to be able to make up for their sessions, like, they had to purchase soap and stuff like that. And in response, Dr. Tiyope said that they revised the makeup session policy when it came to LPS. And I'm not certain if it's also implemented with CWTS, pero there are two types of, I'm since now that are acknowledged, with medical certificate, one without. And that there would be specific makeup activities that would be communicated to the students. So, instead of having to watch shows or purchasing soaps, um, what the cadets can do now in order to make up for the session is do community service. So, they either go to a partner like, um, church or, na, there's, who will, who work and make up for their session. And of course, they also added the ability na if they want to donate for other schools na brigada iswela, that would also be an option. Pero, that will be depend on the agreements of the student and the advisor. So, there's more voice, masi-, there's more voice when it comes na sa cadet in terms of having to make up rather than like the previous year. Then, when it came to the student involvement, um, so, the, the following are actually suggestions that we consulted with Dr. Tiyope when it comes to addressing student involvement because he actually suggested the, was na, would be best na, though he has addressed some areas such as the finance problems and issuing of like receipts and stuff. Um, and gali sir tama good ang kuay ang NSPD because damayro dyan ang like nang power nila. Like, if you see the advisor or the structure of the LPS, there's only one head and then RA assistant. So, um, um, Dr. Tiyope asked if, hindi pagiakun ba i-monitor, not necessarily monitor, per check each, uh, um, NSDP, like LPS programs and stuff like that. If ever magani, another issue would arise because Dr. Tiyope, wala dyan siya information regarding ano mga mangkatabuan na sa PLOs. As, mangtulat rasa mo really ang advisor. So, he suggested, or proposed to him is that, possible that he include an NSDP components such as LPS, CWTS, and ROTC, that they will have a representative, be included in the SESG Students Rights and Welfare Committee grievance desk. So, they will have events representatives for each component. And that, um, our idea initially was that it would be processed through Co-op, um, Committee on Appointments because, um, it's not similar mga good sa, uh, grievance that na, we canner siya sa, um, college now itself. So, it's a different namang good siya na component and that students in there are, um, other colleges as well who have their own, um, grievance representatives. Pero, yeah, something that we are planning pa or still consulting with other committees. So, that's something that we propose, that will pre-engage them when it came to student involvement. And then, there was also a concern regarding the outreach supply related concerns. Pero, we also clarified na, na, uh, ang problema good ato is that, on the spot, ang gaso on last school year and that, or bitag wala na siya naklaro na pinanapoy gaso on and stuff like that. So, we proposed nalang, if ever maganda'y gaso on sa program, that it would be told to them during orientation pa lang or like earlier strategy per magaprepare. Because it came to providing snacks for the students during community service. Yung yung siya yung naproblema, Jod. It's just that it was on the spot and it was really disorganized. So, they're trying to work on that and they're hoping na, um, makatabang rapo ang mga other team leaders and cadets in it to mismo. Because again, they're, they're under stop and they're trying to work out and try to, um, what do you call that? Do better as a program. So, they're asking for nadir ka'y kun, sure, or something like that because it's difficult na damayro ang ito na gawer sana. So, yeah, um, with that, the committee recommendations is that the LPS students be informed of the approved makeup system including acceptable reasons and required tasks. And that, elect, that we will possibly elect student representatives for any school to be included in the grievance center to evaluate and possibly unify contributions for snacks and materials through voluntary or miscellaneous fees only with proper notice and student approval. And then regularly assess outreach location to make sure student safety, especially for CW activities in unfamiliar or distant communities. So, the committee actually, uh, the committee recognizes and appreciates the prompt action of the NSDP Office, particularly in restructuring the LPS leadership, updating policies, and clarifying fee structures. So, with improvements having already begun, the committee will continue to moni-, to implement the suggested proposed ideas because, um, a monitor non good is that we can't, we as a co-, ad hoc committee cannot continue monitoring them ourselves. So, that's why we're proposing it na, cadets themselves would be the ones in charge of their work. So, follow with that, we actually consulted with the STRAW committee in regards to proposing the idea na if any ba siya ma-include us, um, NSDP, um, NSDP representatives to the grievance desk. And just to summarize it, it's that during some meeting, it's that they were okay right now, but we would, we're planning to propose a resolution. So, we asked like the possible actions that could be taken that would involve STRAW. And then during this sta-, this discussion, the responsibility of the possible NSDP representatives. So, but if ever magani, we do continue to propose that, um, idea. You have to establish the responsibilities since it's something new and it's not like the regular, may tend to let's a council. Or after the consultation with STRAW, the Ad-Hoc Committee plans to work on a resolution that will either expand or amend the current charter of the grievance desk because we, um, were able to, when, during consultation with STRAW, we actually found some mistakes that could be amended and improved. Pero, that is no longer germane to the original purpose of the Ad-Hoc Committee. So, including the events that occurred in relation to the committee, the Ad-Hoc National Service Training Program Affairs Committee believes that the purpose of its development and creation has been fulfilled. Um, although a possible resolution may be proposed by the members in the following sessions, it is no longer relevant to the ori-, original purpose of the Ad-Hoc Committee, which is to investigate and follow up the communication letter that was sent by former Representative Sumoso, NSDP Director Dr. Tiyope about the problems and issues the program cadets face. So, after multiple consultations, Dr. Tiyope has assured the committee that proper action has been taken in response to the original complaint and concern, concerns raised. Um, before the committee concludes its business, uh, we would open the floor to questions from the Student Assembly.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any inquiries for the committee? Going once, going twice, chair is done. The Chair would like to commend and thank the Ad-Hoc NSDP Affairs Committee. Based on their report, it seems that they've done a lot and a very good amount of work regarding this and, and, and their efforts in trying to resolve the matter are, should be commended and, apologies. Yeah, should be commended. So, yeah, thank you once again to the committee and we're looking forward to how else future committees may be able to resolve these matters. So, thank you once, thank you, Chairperson San.
Yes.
To your members.
Uh, once again, thank you to the honorable Assembly and including, the committee concludes its business. Thank you so much.
Okay, so with that, the committee, the Ad-Hoc NSDP Affairs Committee is, has concluded its legislative business. Please, thank you. Okay, so, so much for that. Can, next on our agenda, we have our discussion of the agenda for today, which is, our first is Student Assembly Sponsorship Request, which is, first one is, yeah, our only one is Project Art Reach Drawing and Clay Workshop from students from the Sileman University Fine Arts Department. Are there any motions to summon the students of the Fine Arts Department? Representative Valiserya recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I move to summon the proponent of the sponsorship request.
Are there any seconds?
Second.
Second.
Properly moved in seconded, the Chair summons the students of the SC Fine Arts Department to present their sponsorship request.
Um, may I be recognized, Mr. Chair?
Yes, um, yes, yes, Mr. Hassan, you are speaking on behalf of.
Um, yes, to follow with that, um, I would like to relinquish my seat as a member of the Student Assembly during the time of the sponsorship proposal as well, I am one of the proponents.
Okay, your relinquishing is, is recognized and you are, you are now, you'll now be referred to as a student of the Finance Department.
Okay, so, good afternoon once again to the honorable Assembly. So, I am here on behalf of the, um, Project Art Reach Drawing and Clay Workshop. So, we are asking, uh, we are asking for a sponsorship fund from the Student As-, uh, SESG. So, basically, a brief background on the workshop. It's that it is a student-led and sponsored art workshop with the goal to foster the creative aspects, creative artistic aspects while promoting the culture and arts to develop a deeper appreciation for the arts from the youth. So, the workshop is spearheaded by students from Sileman University Fine Arts Department in collaboration with schools and universities from the Piton and Dipolog cities of Bongga del Norte. So, it, the workshop is also to promote the, um, art college and of course, the Fine Arts Department to possibly market, um, the, oh, the course from senior high school students. So, the participants are senior high school students from the Piton and Dipolog cities of Bongga del Norte. Pero, the main, uh, it is in collaboration with the SSLG or Supreme Student Lear-, uh, Supreme, uh, OGG. It's the Supreme Secondary Learner Government of the Piton City National High School. So, they will actually be taking, um, working with us, the fine, some Fine Arts, um, department students. So, yeah, and I am here with the Finance Head of Project Art Reach and she will explain to you the kuwan, sponsorship request and the breakdown of what we are requesting.
Okay, so, hello, everybody. Um, we will be requesting the total amount of 12,721.66 from the Student Assembly for the following materials such as, uh, terracotta clay, uh, from Foundation University. Uh, so, it, each is 55 pesos. So, we're gonna be purchasing 50 pieces, which will be, uh, a total of 2,750. And sketchbooks from, uh, Kanks, which are, uh, about 87.50 pesos. We will be purchasing 45 pieces for the total of 3,937.50 pesos and graphite 3D pencils from Kanks, uh, which are 14.50 pesos each. Uh, we will be purchasing 45 pieces for 652.50 and, uh, graphite 6B pencils from Kanks also, uh, each for 14.50 pesos. We will be also, um, purchasing 45 pieces for 652.50 pesos and needed, needed erasers from Kanks, which are 19.75 pesos, uh, each will be, we will be purchasing 45 pieces for, uh, 88, 888.75 pesos. And paper, we will also be purchasing paper cups. Uh, each pack will be for, uh, will be 50 pieces from Kanks. Um, they are 73.75 pesos. We'll be purchasing two, uh, packs, which will be 147.50 pesos and tala fabric from Okmart, which each meter will be 54.75 pesos and we will be purchasing two meters for 109.50 pesos and medium trash bags from Lee Plaza, which are 33.75 for one pack. So, we'll be purchasing two packs for 67.50 pesos. Uh, we will also be, uh, giving snacks to the participants. So, we will be assembling that in the Piton City. Um, century tuna, 420 grams. We also, um,
Technical error.
Uh, we, yeah, we also recognize the technical, the technical error. Uh, in the establishment is not from Prince Hyper Mart. It will be from Kanks. Uh, so, each, uh, will be for 100. So, we'll be purch-, purchasing five pieces, uh, for 500 pesos. So, we'll also be purchasing 24/7 mango, uh, 450 gr-, 58 grams from Valizers, which will be 169.70 per piece. Uh, we'll be purchasing two pieces, uh, for 339.40 pesos and sliced bread from Premium Bake Shop for 50 each. So, we're gonna be purchasing four packs for 200. And the accommodation will be, uh, partial travel expense for students that are not from the Piton or Dipolog, uh, which will be, we'll be purchasing at fast cat. Uh, we'll be, uh, each ticket will be 450. So, we will be purchasing three, three tickets for 1,320 pesos. Um, we, there is an, also another technical error at the subtotal. There's, uh, unedited. This is,
Check out.
Yeah, uh, this is not supposed to be here. So, the subtotal will be, um, 11,565.15 pesos. And we are also going to, uh, as for a contingency fund of 10%, it will be 1,156.51 pesos. So, the total amount will be 12,721.66 pesos.
Okay, and to add with that, um, again, we would like to repeat, uh, reiterate, uh, na the Prince Hyper Mart, eh, it's a technical error. It's supposed to be Kanks. And then, Valizers is a branch in the Piton City. So, we will be purchasing that, oh, yeah, there. And then, I wait, hold on. Yeah, sa, the Piton na mo siya i-purchase. And then, a clarification on the accommodation. So, this event will be act, will be held during summer break of Sileman. And that means that the Piton and Dipolog Fine Art students will be going back home to our hometown. So, that's why we kuwan, we're organized it that way. So, when we talk about accommodation, it's for the Fine Art students, not from the Piton and Dipolog. So, those who are willing, and there are three, um, volunteers who want to work on and assist during this workshop. So, we were hoping na, Bahalag Partial Travel Expense, um, which is, uh, covering for their going-to na expense, which is 440. So, they will be covering their own, um, stay there and they will. So, they will be covering their own, um, stay there and they will also be covering for the expense na pabalik here in, like, to wherever they are from, pero, we're just asking na, for it to be covered by the sponsorship fund. Ang ilang padulong sa Pitan. So, that's all, and, yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any motions to accept the sponsorship request, Representative Valiserya?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we accept the sponsorship request, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
Properly moved in seconded, floor is now open for inquiries and discussion. Representative Valiserya.
Thank you, mister, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just to clarify, it has been said that the partial travel expense student will be for the students that are not from the Pitan or Dipolog?
Uh, yes, po, yes, po.
And then, um, ano ni Silagi ka?
Um, there, some of, like, two of them are from Dumagetera and they're just willing, because the people from Fine Arts na who will be working sa workshop are only seven of us. So, four of us are from the Pitan and Dipolog and three of them are volunteers, right?
Canin to look? Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, canin to look a volunteers? They are not from the Pitan, they're from Dumagete lang?
Uh, yes.
Um, so, may I be enlightened, what is, what, what, what is the ano, the Fast Cat economy for?
Okay, so, Fast Cat economy is basically the travel, like, I don't know what do you call, a ship goro to go to the Pitan. So, it's just one ride, padulong from Dumagete to the Pitan and then abot na din diretso. And then, mautanin na ang ipa-cover na, like, ilang travel expense to the Pitan, which is four hundred forty pesos. So, it's actually discounted na, um, because they're students. Uh, it originally, if wala siya na discounts sa students, it would be around five hundred eighty, uh, five hundred fifty, somewhere along the lines, pero, yeah. So, Fast Cat economy is the travel, what's the term? Uh, yeah, tra- travel ship, something.
Okay, um, just a, uh, final question, just to clarify. Um, so, the, as you Fine Arts students will be the one going to the Pitan and not the other way around?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. No further questions from me.
Thank you, Representative, Representative Hamera is recognized next.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would just like to ask to the proponents, is this a council event?
Um, this is not a council event. It is a passion program by the Fine Arts students from the Pitan and Dipolog, because we were able to partner with a, the student government of the Pitan City National High School.
Uh, thank you. Follow, follow-up question, since you, you will be collaborating with other schools, will they also be contributing and shouldering, uh, expenses for the event? Kamo lang ang mag-fund yun.
So, um, they will not be kuwan, paying for anything. It is primarily sponsored by the Fine Arts and Student Government of City High or the Pitan City National High School.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions, but I would just also like to share my sentiments that I believe with the twelve thousand, it is quite large considering that we've only, or the, um, the amount that we have left in the Student Assembly is, I believe, fifteen K. And since we only approved one previously, one request previously, it is quite unfair to requi- to get this much amount and and ang dili, dili kay siya ma-distribute it to other organizations. But however, I, I am open with other representatives have kuwan, uh, are okay with it.
Okay, thank you, Representative Hamera. Representative Rosal is recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would just like to, um, raise a point of inquiry. Have you, have you also approached your council or department in COPVA or even other external organizations to help sponsor or like fund this event?
Um, yes, uh, our council will actually be also, uh, they, because we're not dakot na college and gamay radugaya mong council, we're, um, actually limited when it comes to finance there, but they're assisting in ways, like, they're gonna be providing, like, mga brochers, cause again, it's also a, uh, marketing event to market our course and program, which is Fine Arts. So, they will be helping in ways up.
Um, follow-up question, what about the department, wala po sila kuwan?
Yeah, actually, when we talk about Fine Arts Department Student Organization, the people there are, katung automatic na Fine Arts ka, you're there, but we don't pay for, like, org fees. So, we don't have that. It's more on, like, just to have an organized kuwan department, pero, we don't have funds dud sa padso.
Thank you. Inquiry satisfied, Mr. Chair, but I would like to air out my sentiments, repod. Um, to further echo Representative, Representative Hamera's sentiments, I believe this amount is relatively large, pod, considering that, um, in previous sponsorship requests, we have approved lower amounts for events that are larger in scale and, uh, considering this event, pod, only a limited number of students can benefit from this pod. So, um, however, I wa- I'm also open to kuwan, to arguments from the opposing side. Thank you.
Representative Dison is recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Um, I just have a question towards the proponents. Uh, can the project still be im- implemented if you, if you will only receive partial funding?
Um, yes, it will still be implemented, because we're also planning to ask from help from other establishments, if ever, yeah.
Is your inquiry satisfied, Representative Dison?
Sorry, um, regarding that, how will you adjust your plans? Do you, you have, um, draft, uh, budget proposals for that, so that we can also check?
Uh, unfortunately, uh, we don't have it right now, because for this, um, this layout for the sponsorship request, already out covers our workshop materials and then the snacks. So, if ever manggani na, we only receive partial sponsorship, um, we would be filling out the missing, like, money or like, yeah, from other establishments. So, kibali, this is also our budget proposal for the entire event, so to speak.
Satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Representative Azova, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would just like to raise a point of information to the floor. While I do understand that the budget requested by Mr. Calasang, eh, is big, we also have to consider the, the situation when it comes to our, uh, sponsorship fund. So, we are already in our second to the last session and on our next session, padulong na ang finals week and then close weeks, uh, close week na siya, so, most likely, events will not be happening, uh, that require sponsorship. And we can see this from past, uh, past administrations that, uh, continuously, wala jin mo, mo asg sponsorship around this time. And then, our, the situation, another situation for our, uh, sponsorship fund is that dili siya ma-carry over to the second semester. And then, if naapay mo apply, uh, on the, on our last session, ang pag-process na might jeopardize the, the release of funds due to the, uh, the preparation of the Business and Finance Office to close all accounts para mag-audit sila, para ma-ready na siya for the next semester. And then, another thing is na, wha- when i-close ang accounts sa BFO, I believe a percentage of that money from our account will be taken and then moved to the restricted funds. So, that would mean na, um, the ama- the, largely the money we have on our account remaining balance na to for the first semester, a percentage of that will be taken daily transfer sa atong restricted account, which is harder to access. And because of that, as much as possible, ato jung i-utilize atong mga funds para mas magamay ang percentage makuha sa BFO. That's why I urge Mr. Calasang to, to utilize, to maximize the remaining sponsorship fund na bilin kay sayang kayo siya, kay dili siya ma-carry over sa next semester. Makuaan pa dudyan percentage, percentage para i-butang siya sa restricted funds. So, mo lang na akong ika-she, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Azova. Are there further inquiries? Once again, further inquiries? Representative Valiserya.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask the proponent, if, when will, when will this be, when will this event be implemented? Or when, when will this be executed?
So, the event will happen during sem break, which, uh, again, kay mama uli man me, there sa among hometowns, but specifically, it would be, um, implemented November eighth.
Thank you so much. Point of inquiry to, to the floor. Kanaang, um, budget, uh, sponsorship request from the first semester, pwede pa na siya maga- uh, pwede na siya magamit in events that will transpire at the end of the semester, after the end of the semester? Is that standard practice?
Representative Azova, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. To answer the inquiry raised by, uh, Representative Valiserya, uh, yes, as long as, uh, suffi- uh, the liquidated, uh, pertinent financial documents can be submitted to Goa and then the BFO before the end of the semester, which I believe, uh, makayara siya sa proponents, as long as they start purchasing their, uh, items as soon as they receive the funds and then right after they send it to the Finance Committee, so that it, it can be sent to Goa and then the BFO. I hope that answers your inquiry, Representative.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Representative. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
If the chair may clarify something, are all the materials to be purchased to be within Dumagete?
Um, yes, pero, there are, um, some items that will be purchased in the Pitan. So, such as the twenty-four-seven mango and then the sliced bread.
Okay, with that, that, uh, should this, should this, uh, sponsorship request be approved? Which I would like to urge you guys to, uh, yeah, to make quick with your, our, our liquidation can be done on time before the accounts, accounts close. So, with that, uh, and if the chair may bring up, bring forward in regards to one of the things that they mentioned as a technical error, may the chair request someone to make a necessary amendment in regards to the establishment for snacks for participants, which is supposed to be Kangs and not Prince Hyper Mart? So, if someone may make the amendment, just, just so that auditing may be, may be smoother after, after the fact. And if the, if the chair may ask the, 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 Mr. Calasang, this is correct, right? Supposed to be Kangs, not Prince Hyper Mart? Okay, can someone make the necessary amendment para the receipts will make sense? Representative Gunat is recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to change the, um, establishment for, sorry, for Century Tuna from Prince Hyper Mart to Kangs.
Are there any seconds to that motion?
Second.
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 Properly moved in seconded, are there any objections to the motion? Going once, going twice, chair's amendment is carried. Further inquiries or discussion for the sponsorship request? Representative Hamera, go ahead.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I just also want, uh, to, uh, lastly, air out my sentiments. Uh, well, I really agree as well with Rep. Azova's, uh, sa, uh, sentiment that was laid out earlier and I also understand the, the requested budget that, uh, the department is asking and as we in the assembly are collectively not stingy on our money, I guess on our end, what I'm just concerned about is, uh, if we were to approve this budget, what's left of, of the funds will be three K. And, uh, I'm just also concerned and just really putting on the safety that maybe another organization will also be requesting, even at the last sessions that we have and they'll be getting less than three K na. And the amount requested mangod is more than fifty percent of the fifteen K. But, you know, just coming, just also wanna reiterate all the, uh, that I understand all points.
Thank you, Representative Hamera. Further discussions? Going once, going twice. Chair's done, will now proceed to put the question. All those in favor of this sponsorship request with this amendment, please raise your hand. Once again, the chair will be the one to lower your hand, so please keep them up until I lower them.
Mr. Chair, currently, there are twenty-one, twenty-two votes.
Well, hmm, okay, hang on.
Twenty-three.
Okay. The chair sees twenty-three, okay. Hands have been lowered. All those not in favor, please raise your hand. Once again, all those not in favor. Okay, all those in abstention.
Mr. Chair, there are fifteen votes for abstention.
The chair is counting sixteen, secretaries, is that correct or is it fifteen? Okay, now.
Um, Mr. Chair, my end, it's fifteen.
Okay, it's not fifteen, okay, thank you. We have twenty-three in favors, you're not in favor, and fifteen in abstention. This budget proposal is accepted with its amendments. Congratulations to the.
Thank you so much, um, Honorable Student Assembly for accepting our sponsorship request.
Representative Devese, your hand raised?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would just like to express as well a few sentiments. This is unrelated na to the sponsorship fund, but on the presentation of the sponsorship request itself, although we acknowledge that Representative Calasang relinquished his seat and is not taking part of the discussion and the voting, this may still be misconstrued or can be seen as a conflict of interest, especially in public perception. So, just to really avoid creating a poor image for the assembly, and this goes out for everyone, wherein we may be construed as the very people, repod, benefiting from our own sponsorship fund, especially for requests this big, it would be more appropriate of other members in the organization can represent instead. So, nothing at all against the sponsorship request, moron. We as, uh, representatives should be more proactive on the preservation of the integrity, um, and credibility of the assembly. So, to avoid such issues in the future, uh, I would recommend if assemblymen whose organizations are applying for sponsorship funds should refrain from personally presenting their own proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Representative Devese. That is very well noted and I, the chair is also inclined to agree. So, I'd like to echo that statement to the rest of the assembly for future sponsorship requests. And before the chair forgets, the chair recognizes Mr. Calasang as Representative Calasang once again. Moving forward, our next, next on our agenda is our budget proposals. Or their first one being the Study Space Initiative from the S U S G Educational Services Committee. But before that, is with the, with the, would the floor like to have a short recess before we discuss, before we discuss budget proposals? Okay, with that, the chair declares, uh, suspension of session for, given it is, given this is online, we'll give. given it is, given this is online, we'll give it five minutes. Session is suspended.
One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four.
Can I get some reactions please? Okay, with that. Session is called back to order. Please settle back representatives, this will not be proceeding with our order of business. Once again, our next uh exit part of the agenda is the study space initiative. Propo- proposal of S U S G Educational Services Committee. Are there any motions to summon the S U S G Educational Services Committee? Representative Gunat, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to summon the Educational Services Committee.
Any seconds?
Second.
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 Yeah, properly moved and seconded, the chair summons the S U S G Educational Services Committee to present their budget proposal. And I'm requesting the those two who are going to be presenting to please clearly state your name. So our secretaries can take note and the chair and the presiding officer may also take note.
Good afternoon, honorable representatives. I am Alexandra Mahos, the chairperson of the S U S G Educational Services Committee. And this afternoon, we will be presenting the study spaces initiative first semester finals period budget proposal. Proceeding hereafter will be my co-chairperson Frances May Anduhar.
Good day everyone. I'm Frances May Anduhar, the general division vice chairperson under the ju- educational services committee. I'll be giving a brief background on the study spaces initiative. A project aimed at supporting students during the upcoming final examination period. So the study spaces initiative or S S I is a bi semestral project designed to support students during exam periods by providing comfortable and accessible study areas for the upcoming final examinations on October twenty seven to thirty- to thirty one, twenty twenty five. The S S I will operate from five P M to nine P M at Oriental Hall, student lounge one and two. This continuation of the midterms S S I addresses the high demand experienced previously, ensuring that students continue to receive the same academic and emotional support. The initiative offers free snacks and coffee, printings, access, extension cables, improved internet connectivity and pastoral care. Additionally, motivational bookmarks will be distributed to encourage students throughout the exam week. To extend its reach, snack services will also be provided to the College of Agri- Agriculture and the Institute of Environmental and Marine Sciences, which currently have limited access to the S S I facilities.
And so now we will be presenting the amounts we requested in peso or our budget proposal. In the first row for the student snacks and beverages, we requested five pieces of the Ribisco Party Mix Biscuit Medley, which is one point sixty seven kilograms each from We Shop Center Incorporated. If you may see in the canvassed items, we canvassed from three stores. That is Unitop Mall, Dumagueta, We Shop Center Incorporated, and Lee Plaza Hypermart. We chose the biscuit option from We Shop Center Incorporated because previously in the midterms period, we bought from Unitop Dumagueta. Specifically, their Marrienda Time Assorted Biscuit, one point five kilograms, and we noted that it was insufficient for uh every night's consumption of the students. So we now opt to the one point sixty seven kilogram version from We Shop Center. And more specifically, each night, we will not only be serving the biscuits uh alone, but on three nights, we will be serving banana turon. And on two nights, we will be serving the party mix biscuit medley. That would explain why we bought five pieces, because two of those will be for the main campus S S I. The other two will be donated to the College of Agriculture na campus. And finally, the last one would be donated to IMES. Next, we move on to banana turon. We canvassed from three establishments as well, namely Ann Food House, Elvira Banana Q, and Lando Banana Q. And we noted that in Ann Food House, they offered the cheapest and most number or quantity of banana turon that we could buy. So we will be buying four hundred pieces of this item since for the three nights, we will be serving one hundred thirty pieces approximately for each night. So on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we will be serving approximately one hundred thirty pieces of turon. Next, we move on to the third item, which is the Great Taste White Twin Pack. And we will be buying five pieces of that from Lee Plaza Hypermart. We also canvassed from three stores for this item, namely Robi- Robinson's Supermarket, Lee Plaza Hypermart, and A V F Pharmacy and General Merchandise. And it was noted by those who canvassed that the option offer- offered by Lee Plaza was the cheapest. So next, we will be buying Lily Paper Cups from Lee Plaza. And we canvassed from three establishments as well. You may check in the appendices from which stores we canvassed. We will be buying fifteen pieces or fifteen packs of those paper cups. And to explain this number would be the ten packs will be for the main campus S S I. And the three will be for the College of Agriculture, and the remaining two will be for IMES. And lastly, we will also be buying tridem paper plate from Yan Yan Baking and Culinary. And once again, we canvassed from three stores for this particular item. And we propose to buy ten packs of this item. That would amount to a subtotal of four thousand two hundred forty three point seventy five cents. Contingency fund was added, which is four hundred twenty four pesos and thirty eight cents. And a grand total of four thousand six hundred sixty eight pesos and thirteen cents. We did not include any requisitions, and therefore, the previously stated amount is our total amount requested in peso. We are now open for any questioning, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairperson Mahos and Chair Vice Chairperson Anduhar. Are there any motions to accept the budget proposal? Representative Valisaya, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we accept the budget proposal, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
Seconded, floor is now open for discussions. Once again, the floor is open for discussions if there are any. Representative Villa Flores, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I just uh can I ask for the uh for you to show the kaning Great Taste White sa canvas? Yeah, um okay. So since di ba we have kanisha, this is just a suggestion siguro for next time. Um has the committee considered kay? I have noticed during your katong midterms na na study spaces initiatives, ay sakto ba, study space initiative um na you put the kanan- kanabitang matimplara, like na mga creamer and add sugar sa isa ka mag transparent na margtupperware. Has the committee considered purchasing katubitang mag bulk, like the bigger, the bigger sachet siguro of coffee and then iing ato rapod ninyo? This is so that we could lessen the amount of plastic na we na we would be able to kanabitang use inside the campus. I understand that maybe the reason for the committee, uh the reason na the committee chose this is because it's already kanabitang the prescribed or the best na na number of grams siguro for isa na judkatimplahan, like you don't have to measure it again. But for purposes of abiding with the environmental guidelines of the university, um suggestion lang na next time siguro we just um the committee would just purchase the bigger one and then isem rasa ato na you transfer it to a different container. That's all.
Thank you, Representative Villa Flores. Is there um the what the chairpersons like to respond to the manifestation? Representative Villa Flores, go ahead.
Thank you so much for that inquiry, Representative Villa Flo- Flores. So to answer your question, yes, we did consider other options. Um for example, in buying the bigger packs of the Great Taste White Twin Pack or other bigger packs of the consumable beverages. But in light of SOAD's uh donation, since SOAD will be providing coffee and Milo as well in free flowing form there, we recognized that um this allowed us to buy lesser quantities of the Great Taste White Twin Pack. And therefore, for my first point, I believe that in our deliberation uh sa amo angko chairs, we came to a conclusion that buying these packs were more feasible and not only more convenient but more realistic, since we only needed to buy lesser amounts. And for my second point, we also came to the conclusion of buying the twin packs in contrast to the bigger packs, because we also considered that if we bought those bigger packs and put them in um containers wherein students can just scoop out the beverages or the powder drinks themselves, that would be uh more prone to cross contamination. And although we do recognize this need for lesser plastic wastes, we also are concerned for students' health in general in that um those types of means for the coffee and powder drinks may be, may contract um bacteria in the long run, since S S I will be functioning for one week man good. But thank you so much for that inquiry, and I hope this answered your question.
Satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Further inquiries and discussion? Representative Kamina, do you recognize?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I'd like to ask a point of inquiry to the proponents. If um by that, you mean that you will be displaying plastic sachets um similar to last um midterms there in the S S I initiatives in O H?
Chairperson?
Yes, we will po.
Uh uh thank you. Um does I like to ask, villadi um ask permission baron because um it's plastic and madisplay siya, so if ever, what are your ways forward? To like, we're pla- like, we advocate tulasan plastic na niyan, madisplay ang plastic. So you have like other plans baron kay tul- it was mentioned that ang malasan pinagcross contamination? So pares paglas, so by sachet dud siya, pero naganjog plastic, so do you have other plans ba on how you'll be displaying the different na coffee? Na garb?
Yes, thank you so much for bringing it, bringing that to light, honorable representative. We have considered that displaying the packs would lead students to think that we are displaying more plastic waste. And yes, we are thinking of other thing, other ways forward. But banking on the midterm student spaces initiative, we did have the authorization of SOAD and other related offices like SERAID. And this S S I, we aim to lessen plastic waste in contrast to the previous S S I period by displaying less of these coffee packs. For example, in our midterms S S I, we displayed double this amount. And as well as for our other coffee variant, we also display that. But for this period, we aim to lessen plastic waste by cutting down our displayed plastic um packs in the form of coffee. And moving forward, if you have any other suggestions, we would be open to it. But as of right now, that is our uh fallback. And we are also securing trash bins in order for the plastic wastes to be properly disposed. Thank you so much.
Very satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Thank you, Chairperson. Are there further inquiries? Going once, going twice. With that, seeing have no amendments have been made, we'll put the quest sorry, we'll put the motion to question. Are all those in favor of accepting this budget proposal? As it is, please raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, there are forty one votes.
Okay.
Apologies, Mr. Chair. There are forty two votes.
Okay, wait for, oh sorry, uh hands down, all those not in favor, please raise your hand. All those in abstention? With forty two, thank you. With forty two in favor and one in abstention, this budget, this budget proposal is accepted. Congratulations to the Educational Services Committee.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and for the rest of the honorable representatives. And so now may we request for the approval of the honorable Mr. Chair for us to leave the call, if that is all right?
Yes, Chairperson, you may accept the call. And that goes for uh the rest of the executive committees here to present. Once your, once your budget proposal discussion has concluded, you are free to leave. So thank you once again, Educational Services Committee. Moving forward, we, our next budget proposal is from the S U S G Resolutions Committee in regards to purchasing office supplies. So are there any motions to summon the S U S G Resolutions Committee? Representative Villa Flores, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to summon the uh chairperson of the Resolutions Committee.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, the chair summons the Resolutions Committee to present their, their budget proposal.
Good afternoon, once again, honorable assembly. I would just like to ask if I'm audible?
Yes, Chairperson, you're, you're audible.
Okay, thank you so much. So good afternoon, honorable assembly. I am Therese Bungansisa, the current chairperson of the Resolutions Committee for this school year. Alongside with me is our logistics division's head, Roberto de Guia. My vice chairperson, Aaron Frederick, is unable to join us due to some family matters, so he sends his regrets. So for this afternoon, Mr. Chair, we will be requesting funds for our office supplies. Now, I feel like the num- number one question here is why do we need a separate budget from the secretariat? Now, the, the driving force for this budget proposal, jud was when, was when we had something, uh some resolutions to be printed. We were told that first, um the only, the only um, the only paper available for free printing for the executive committees was not really up to the standards of the Resolutions Committee that we can pres- that we can um present to the offices and have some concerns about the longevity of its papers as well. Now, I don't have the physical copy right now, but if um if I could describe it, the free paper that the secretariat would offer to the city executive committees is a bit thin and it's a bit transparent as well. Although the secretariat ha- uh committee has their a good, like high quality paper, um it wa- it's unfortunately, unfortunately, we have to pay for it. So there was already an instance where we had to print something for our process that we had to pay out of pocket. And we do not want to continue that type of practice. Now, if I could proceed lang to explaining each of the items. So we only have two um items that we would like to request lang. Um first is definitely our A four paper. It's our A four paper. We decided to ask for five rims because um when, when we printed the thirty fourth remaining resolutions, it was around resolution forty one to seventy five, if I can remember it correctly. We used up um one whole rim alone. And that's not in consideration to its duplicates pang i-present sa mga offices for it that has not responded to our emails. It's not in, it's not included pa poza cover letters that it's, that has to be attached to be sent poza offices and not included as well with the acknowledgement receipts that the offices have slight received the resolution from us. So with one rim out and just for that lang, it really stroke us na, oh no, we can't do this as like amo arad dud. So we decided with, with five because we believe it's sufficient for the whole school year and for any past resolutions, past assemblies that we can, that we will be proceeding with our, with our operations. And if it's a bit of a concern naman sa assembly, um this will be obviously passed on to the next Resolutions Committee if we will not be able to finish it. So our, our paper, our logistics committee actually went through at least I, I think five, but we will only present the three stores that have like the most affordable ones, which is from Kangs, Unitop, and Macy's. We decided to go with um the Macy's Star List A four paper. I was with the logistics chairperson when we, when we canvassed for this one, and it's already affordable for one rim itself, and the quality is really good already. So we decided to go with this one. And then the next, we, I, I mean sorry, and then to specify lang the price, it is one eighty per rim. And that is in a really good consideration, since the others are around two hundred plus already. Just like in Kangs, the highest is two hundred thirty five, the lowest is two hundred three, and the unit top is two hundred forty five. So alright, so moving on to the inks. Now for the ink, you, maybe the question here is that the free printing services is only requires paper and we don't have to pay for the ink, correct? But like, we decided to pre- like provide lang at least one ink to the secretariat committees as some sort of courtesy since we are, since our committee is really known for bulk printing and it's really just some sort of uh a sort of courtesy lang to the secretariat, since we'll be using a lot of their ink. And again, we, our logistics committee went through at least seven stores for this one. But again, we went lang with three stores that are most affordable. Um oh and we are, we have chosen the Micro Valley for three hundred eighty for the black colored ink only. And I think that is all. Thank you. Uh we are open for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Chairperson Bungansiso. Are there any motions to accept the budget proposal? Representative Tevez, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to accept this budget proposal.
Any seconds?
Second.
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 Okay, properly moved and seconded, floor is now open for discussion. Representative Bitang, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would just like to make uh or to mention some sentiments, although it's just minor moment. So next time, I would like to recommend that to put the complete name of the establishment that will really reflects the kaning canvas items that you put for the sake of maintaining the formality put ba. So instead of macy, kamey macy for packaging cleaning, so on and so forth. And that is all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further discussions? Going once? Going twice? Chair is none. Okay, we'll put the question. All those in favor of this budget proposal, please raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, there are forty votes.
Thank you. The chair will be lowering their, will be lowering the representative's hands. All those not in favor? All those in abstention? Hey, with four, okay, thank you, representatives. With fourteen in favor, zero not in favor, this resol- ah sorry, this budget proposal is accepted. Congratulations to the Resolutions Committee.
Thank you so much, honorable assembly. And now we'd like to excuse ourselves from the meeting.
Yes, you may. Thank you, thank you, Chairperson. The next item in our budget proposal is, budget proposal agenda is Project Hunahuna, Amidst Burden We Thrive from S U S G Health Committee. Are there any motions to summon? Representative, Representative Tevez.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to summon the proponents of this budget proposal.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, the chair summons S U S G Health Committee to present their budget proposal.
Hello, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and respective representatives. Am I audible lang?
Yes, Chairperson.
Okay, so um can you share screen the budget plan? Thank you. So hello again, good afternoon everyone. So our project is um entitled Project Hunahuna Amidst Burden We Thrive. So first, um I would like to say dud na um apologies, and we're very sorry for this one, kay there will be a miscommunication and confusion for this. Um chair, can I proceed to the, or I will discuss the details for this one, or?
Based uh before and, I would like to give a point of information to the assembly. The S U S G president communicated with me something regarding this budget proposal, so um if the chair may ask na lang, if may the chair may ask, chairperson, I'd be able to explain possibly why, why
Yes, yes.
This event had to, so you don't have to discuss the, the event anymore. You just explain the situation as to why the president had to contact me.
Okay, see. Um so again, apologies for this one, because our event was successfully concluded yesterday, October four, twenty twenty five. So the money that um we will be presenting on ta- today sa assembly kay katong two K na budget pap kay will, we will be reimbursing na lang for that one. So we actually asked first or nag- asked me kay Kuya Grail if pwede ba may makasubmit ato last time? And then um nagclarify said si JV, which is our vice chairperson, and then nag-ingon siya nga, yes, makapass daw mi og budget pap. However, I believe wala si Kuya Grail nakabantay said sa date, which is today ang, ang assembly. So na-happen siya after na the event. date, which is today ang, ang assembly. So na-happen siya after na the event. So he thought, ah si Kuya Grail nag-thought na ang event na mo kay different siya kay we have um mga si, I, we have, uh, I think kilaka events this month mang good. So he thought nga lahi siyang event. So motong na confuse siya. And then me as well na chair kay na-confused but and as well as the project head for this one kay I thought na um in order for you to like ma-reimburse ang money kay you need to present it first sa uh assembly, even though na human na siya or na done ang event. So that's why na-confused me. So apologies apologies dud for this one and we're very, very sorry for this. Kay na-happen ang event yesterday, which is successful approved siya. So that's why. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you Chairperson. So with that, if, if, if that chair's not, not not misunderstanding, you, you won't be pursuing this budget proposal anymore?
Kamagan, Mr. Chair.
Will you still, okay, will you still be uh continuing with this budget proposal or you won't anymore now?
I, I think ayaw na lang daw boy, Mr. Chair, because na done naman po ng event.
Okay, so a point of information for everyone, or parliamentary information. Given that, once again, that it was presented that this event had already happened yesterday and this budget proposal by definition is rendered moot and can no longer be applicable for the event. So with that, we don't have to disapprove it, but instead we don't have to make a motion to accept it. So we can just proceed along with our agenda. So we don't have to make a motion to, for anything regarding this. Given that, given the information. So this won't be marked as disapproved. It just won't be it just won't be marked anything at all in regards to our discussions here in the assembly. So with that, um the chair will excuse uh represent, ah sorry, Chairperson Abiel, you may now exit the, the call.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair, and we're very, very sorry for this one. Thank you so much.
Okay. Representative Azoa, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the recognition. I would just like to raise a parliamentary inquiry upon this matter. If this was not approved by the assembly, di, diba diligi na punta pwede maka-reimburse ani because it was not approved na bo-release up porta for this?
Yes, we won't be releasing any money for this. So it seems that their next step right now is to possibly file for a, or submit for a reimbursement or ratification thing for next, for next session. If I'm not, if the chair's not mistaken. But you're, you're free to enlighten us on this, on this matter.
No, it's okay, Mr. Chair. Satisfied.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll be proceeding to our next budget proposal from SSG Hurt Committee. Apologies, this file is too big to be viewed. First aid kit supplies fro- to be proposed by SSG Hurt Committee. Are there any, are there any motions to summon? Representative Gunat, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to summon the SSG Hurt Committee.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, the chair hereby summons SSG Hurt Committee to present their proposal.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and to the student assembly. I am Elijah Guetalara, the vice-chairperson of Hurt. And along with me is Xavier from Orkan, which is also my co-chair, co-vice-chairperson. And he'll be the one presenting the first aid kit supplies budget proposal.
Hello, good afternoon, everyone. I am Xavier from Orkan, uh, the vice-chairperson for the responsive uh division of SSG Hurt. And today I'll be, today I will be presenting our budget proposal uh for first aid kit supplies totaling six thousand forty-eight point nine pesos. Now this proposal aims to provide Hurt with complete and reliable first aid kits for emergencies and events wherein we're called to station. Now, currently, uh Hurt does not have a common or official kit that the whole team can use. While we, while we do have our own personal kits, there is no common kit for everyone to use in case in cases where we are requested to station at university events. Now, this can become a challenge because uh personal kits are usually small and meant for individual use only and they're not always complete or standardized, which make it difficult to respond properly when uh Hurt is required to serve as a first aid team during events. Now, uh each kit will include basic items like cotton, gauze, antiseptics, uh gloves, adhesive, tape, and alcohol for um wound care. And then there'll also be equipment for checking vital signs such as stethoscope, uh sphygmomanometer, thermometer, and pulse oximeter, which is important for monitoring the health of um patients and especially for our incident reports. And then there'll also be materials for fractures and sprains such as the triangular bandages and the hot and cold compresses and other materials such as a small cooler for the, for ice or for to store the cold compress and spray bottles for proper storage of wounding. Now, um we have canvassed, um we have, um, the stores we have canvassed are uh close by so that when uh we are needed to when procuring these materials, diro kesha, listod uh for the kit containers, these will hold all of the materials. We canvassed uh Holy Med, Unitop, and Le Plaza, and we chose Le Plaza because it is uh the biggest container which can uh hold all of the materials. And it's also the cheapest. Now for the cotton, we canvassed Buzz Express, Mex, and Holy Med, and we decided on Holy Med for the cheapest. Uh, for the gauze, we we canvassed the same three stores and we chose Holy Med because it is also the cheapest. For the gloves to be used, we canvassed the same two stores and chose Mex because it is the cheapest. For the micropore, it is the same three stores and we chose Holy Med because it is the cheapest. For the antiseptics, we chose Holy Med because it is also the cheapest. Um for scissors for bandaging, we chose Mex as it is the cheapest. And as well as the alcohol, for the alcohol, we uh canvassed City Mall, Kangs, and Le Plaza, and we chose Le Plaza as for it is the cheapest. For the stethoscope and sphygmomanometers, we chose Mex because it is the cheapest. And pulse oximeter, we chose Holy Med for it is the cheapest. And the thermometer, Mex as, we chose Mex because it is the cheapest. For pen light, we chose Mex as it is the cheapest. And then triangular bandage, we chose Holy Med. And for the hot and cold compress, we went with Buzz Express because it is the cheapest. For the small cooler, we we chose Le Plaza because it is the cheapest. And the water spray, we chose Unitop because it is the cheapest. Now, with these kits, we can ensure that there is always a first aid kit that is available at any time and that every Hurt uh deployment will be organized and uh it will be well-prepared and well-equipped with the proper medical supplies. Uh that would be all. Thank you. I'm ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Vice Chairperson from Orkan. Any, I'm sorry, are there any motions to accept? Representative Valisir.
Thank you so much for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move that we accept the budget proposal.
Any seconds?
Second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, floors now open for discussions. Representative Valisir, you're recognized.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. I, first of all, I would like to commend the proponents because this is a, this is a very well-written proposal. However, point of inquiry and also clarification lang, did you choose to opt for the most inexpensive items for most in, most inexpensive products for all items, if I'm correct?
Uh, yes.
Um, that's commendable, no, from a budgeting standpoint. However, I'd like to share my sentiments, Mr. Speaker, that um cost should not always be the primary factor, especially when we are talking about medical supplies such that that are used in emergency purposes. So I hope that the prices do not compromise also the quality of these, of these products. So that would be all, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much once again.
Yeah, thank you Representative Valisir. Further discussions? Once again, any discussions on the floor? Going once, going twice? Okay, Chair here's none. These are chairs. And all those in favor of this budget proposal, as is, please raise your hand.
Um wraps giving another three seconds for you to vote. Three, two, one. Mr. Chair, there are thirty-eight votes.
Thank you. Thank you representatives. The chair will be lowering the hands. All those not in favor? Okay, all those in abstention? Thank you. With thirty-eight in favor, two not in, sorry, thirty, thirty-eight in favor, two abstentions, this budget proposal is accepted. Congratulations to the Hurt Committee. Proceeding forward, the Hurt Committee still has one more budget proposal, which is their CPR caravan donation. So uh with that, we have to make another motion to summon them. Okay, Representative Makuro Boy, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to summon the proponents.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, Hurt Committee is summoned again. Go ahead, you may present your, your next proposal.
Uh, thank you. Um, the second proposal is uh we are asking for a budget of eight hundred pesos as a monetary donation to the CPR caravan event of the SIRC. Now to give context, the CPR caravan is an event by Sino University Red Cross Youth that teaches people how to perform CPR uh which is an es- which is an essential life-saving skill during cardiac or breathing emergencies. Now, we Hurt are in partnership with RCY and we want to support this project because it shares the same goals of promoting health awareness, uh safety, and emergency preparedness. Now, by contributing to this event, Hurt would also help to strengthen our relationship with uh a uh major uh health organization here in Domagete. Now, the eight hundred donation will serve as part of our donation as uh one of the things that Red Cross Youth asked for this partnership was a monetary donation. We from Hurt uh decided to donate eight hundred pesos. This will be given directly as a monetary contribution to SIRC to help them with the CPR caravan. Now, there was, there's no contingency fund because this is a one-time donation and does not involve purchasing any materials or equipment. Uh, that would be all.
Okay, apologies. Please give the chair a minute. Apologies, the chair has family requesting his attention. Okay. With that, um, are there any motions to accept the budget proposal? Representative Azoa, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to ac- accept the second budget proposal presented by the SSG Hurt Committee.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, floors now open for discussions. Any discussions going once? Going twice? Okay, with no further discussions, all those in favor of this budget proposal, please raise your hand.
Last three seconds for the representatives to place their votes. Mr. Chair, there are thirty-five representatives who are in favor of the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Chair will lower everyone's hands. All those not in favor? All those in abstention? Okay, two. With thirty-five in favor and two in abstention, this budget proposal is accepted. Congratulations to SSG Hurt Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, may we ask to be excused?
Yes, go ahead. You may, you may accept the call, Vice Chairperson. Thank you very much. And that, that concludes our budget proposals agenda. Next we have, next will be our, starting our resolutions, but before that, the chair would like to declare or not declare, the chair would like to suspend the session for twelve minutes for for CR break and for the floors to conduct their caucuses. Twelve, twelve minutes. So yeah, session suspended. Okay, can I get that confirmation that everyone's good now? Okay, thank you. Proceeding forward to the order of business and our agenda, we are now in resolutions. We have four resolutions in our agenda. And the first one is resolution establishing a committee on appropriations as permanent committee under the student assembly. With this, since considering that the chair is one of the proponents, the chair will relinquish his presiding seat to the deputy minority floor leader. Are there any objections? Going once, going twice, Chair here's none. The presiding seat is relinquished to the deputy minority floor leader.
Next on the agenda, we have a resolution establishing a committee on appropriations as a permanent committee under the student assembly by Representative Ozawa, Representative Amante, Representative Makarubo, Representative Tevez, Representative Hamera, Representative Villia Flores and Representative Minalam. Um, the chair now calls, uh, the chair summons the proponents of this resolution. Proponents, whenever you're ready, please take the floor.
Thank you for the recognition, Mister Chair. And good afternoon once again to the honorable Student Assembly. Today, I'll be representing the resolution entitled, "The Resolution Establishing a Committee on Appropriations as a Permanent Committee Under the Student Assembly." So this initiative answers to the call of a longstanding problem of the budget and finance system of the SSG. Uh, the establishment of this committee enhances the students' assembly's legislative oversight function over financial expenditures. It also, uh, it also assists the executive committee when it comes to budget deliberations and hopefully with the goal that they don't have to, uh, they are not required to present during Sundays because as we all know, the executive committee already functions throughout the entire week. And yet, we still require them, uh, to present during Sundays when they present a budget proposal, which I, which the proponents feel like it's unfair. So this answers to the call that, to that, uh, it helps alleviate the burden to the executive committee and especially to the finance chairperson. So, uh, following that, I will be explaining the guidelines for the committee on appropriation, starting with the committee structure. So it's already a given that there's a chairperson, two vice chairpersons, and we added, uh, primary members and associate members. So all of these members shall be elected from the, uh, student, student assembly, uh, specifically one-third. The reason for this is that in order for, uh, in order for a budget to pass and is allowable under the constitution, it has to be approved by the student assembly and basing on our house rules and the minimum, uh, number of representatives that can pass a motion is one-third. So that's why we apply that here. So, uh, whatever budgetary approvals that the committee will make is still constitutional. So following that, the, the two vice chairpersons shall be internal vice chairpersons and external vice chairpersons. Uh, the treasurer of the student assembly shall automatically be designated as the internal vice chairperson of the, uh, of the committee so that to establish, uh, proper collaboration also within the student assembly. And following that, I will be, uh, discussing the duties and responsibilities of each members of the committee. So first, the chairperson shall preside over the committee hearing budget deliberation, call and set the agenda. Basically oversees the committee and ensures that proper implementation of these guidelines are being made. Following that is the duties and responsibilities of the internal vice chairperson. We just patterned it from the, uh, duties and responsibilities of the treasurer. In addition to that, we included that the internal vice chairperson shall, uh, manage and maintain the committee journal, which, uh, the committee has the discretion to how this will be administered via Google Docs or, uh, or Google Sheets. That is up to the discretion of the committee. And the one that will be managing that is the internal vice chairperson. So following that is the external vice chairperson, which is self-explanatory. Uh, the vice chairperson alongside the, the committee chairperson will handle external affairs. This would mean the, uh, collaboration with the executive, uh, body, uh, communication with other organizations and entities and past and future meetings with the university administration when it comes to budgets. For example, uh, biddings, uh, that's one example for this and consultations when they do decide to increase, uh, tuition fees. So automatic, the chairperson and external vice, vice chairperson will be overseeing that. Following that is the primary member and associate member. The reason why we structured the membership this way is that we acknowledge that not everyone in the, in the student assembly is well-versed when it comes to budget deliberation, finance terms, et cetera, et cetera. That's why we, uh, categorize this as primary members and associate members because we are still trying to uphold the, the goal of representation on the floor. So primary members shall serve as the core, the core members of the committee, they will, uh, they will function as, um, mga, basically the core members of the committee like prepare, uh, the preparation and safekeeping of all necessary paperwork, coordinating with uh, executive committee, constitutional committee, external organization and other organizations or entities, basically assisting the chairpersons and the two vice chairpersons. And an associate member, what, what differs them from the primary members is that they have limited function in the committee, but nonetheless, they are still members and are subject to, uh, other provisions in these guidelines and which I will be tackling later on. So we also highlighted the, um, a special case when the, on section eight, article three, when there is a vacancy in the, of the position of internal vice chairperson, it's not going to be like a normal hierarchy where the primary member shall assume the role of internal vice chairperson. It will not be that way because in previous, uh, previous position, uh, provisions, we've stated that the internal vice chairperson is the elected treasurer of the student assembly. So in, in, in cases of vacancy, the student assembly shall immediately elect, uh, the student assembly treasurer so it can assume its role inside the committee on appropriations as its internal vice chairperson. So, guys, but the committee shall, uh, shall act on these referrals within three days. And just to clear up the air, we also added here section four defining what act on referrals shall mean. So upon getting or upon receiving and logging the referral, the committee, depending on how urgent the referrals is, shall, uh, shall act on by scheduling and convening of the necessary committee meeting budget deliberations or hearing to formally address the referred matter. The committee shall ensure the final committee report or legislative action stemming from the referral is completed and submitted by the student assembly within two working days following the conclusion of the relevant proceedings. So that is all for the referrals. You can, uh, read in-depth more the provisions later on because we have already, this document is already furnished to the assembly. So you are given ample time to, uh, read in-depth the, uh, the document, the resolution rather. So article five tackles the meetings, budget deliberation and hearings, the differences between the three and its specific, and its, uh, specifications. Yes. Uh, first, for the general provisions, the budget deliberations and hearings shall be open to all Siliconman students. In case a Siliconman student wishes to watch face-to-face student budget deliberation, they may do so freely by entering the venue of the session, provided that strict decorum must be maintained throughout the session, proper attire must be worn, et cetera, et cetera. So this, uh, uh, strengthens our goal for transparency and accountability when it comes to budget deliberations. So this, uh, uh, strengthens our goal for transparency and accountability when it comes to budget deliberations, because, um, are, aside from it being, aside from our goal for it to be, the budget, uh, system to be made easier, we don't want to compromise, uh, the transparency and accountability and integrity of it. So section two, uh, outlines the hierarchy of the presiding officers when it comes to budget deliberation. And then, yes, and following that is the budget deliberation itself. The difference between budget deliberations and hearings is that budget, that budget deliberations are mainly to tackle, um, budget deliberations basically. And hearings are meant to tackle issues regarding or stemming from the budget deliberations. For example, the mistreatment of funds, um, improper conduct of an officer regarding how they handle budgets. So that will be tackled during hearings. So basically, to put it in simple terms, budget deliberation is similar to how earlier we discussed the five, the five budget proposals and the sponsorship request of the coan, of the student assembly, uh, given by the executive committee. So following that, uh, committee hearings, it's similar to, one thing, uh, an example for this was the Committee on Audit, uh, Committee on Audit Hearing, where an, an issue was referred to the committee. So they conducted a hearing to, to gather information that will aid the committee in, uh, making the best decision possible. So that was the fifty K, the fifty thousand budget, uh, hearing of the Committee on Audit. So that, uh, basically that's, this Committee on Appropriations hearing is patterned to that. So for the meetings, we, uh, we classified it to three categories, a regular meeting, special meeting, and an emergency meeting. So this is where the roles of the primary and associate members come into play. So regular meetings, kay, all members of the committee are required to attend. And special meetings can be requested by the chairperson or any member, uh, given that one-third of the total membership of the committee approves of this. An emergency meeting shall mean, uh, emergency meeting that, uh, is requested by the three branches of the, uh, of the execu, of, of the SUSG, the other, the constitutional committees when need be, and the university administration. So, yes, and, uh-uh. And during budget deliberations, one thing I forgot to mention was another, another distinction between primary members and, and, oh my god, apologies for the noise, uh, the distinction between primary members and associate members. So this, uh, this is, this pertains to the, uh, budget request or sponsorship request. We identified them, la, uh, we categorized them to lower back or upper back, meaning DAC or Budget at Completion. So during lower, lower back deliberations, um, only the primary members or majority of the primary members of the committee votes are needed to pass this, uh, to pass the sponsorship request or budget request of the lower back, because, uh, because it's stated in the, in the previous provisions that, uh, the associate members have limited voting rights. So this is where it applies. And in upper back, uh, sponsorship request exceeding five thousand pesos, this is where associate members come in, because, for example, uh, uh, let's use the situation earlier, the fine arts departments, um, but finance depart, uh, the fine arts department sponsorship request, this falls under upper back because it exceeds twelve thousand. And as much as possible, we want to cater to the different perspectives that we can only get when the associate members are present in the budget deliberation. So, yes. Following that, we also specify the voting, uh, with five sections. I will not read all of them lang po, because this document was already furnished prior to the session. And following that, article six and article seven are, because the proponents recognize that the, this guideline is not perfect, and policy changes are bound to happen that will affect the effectiveness of this, uh, resolution and guidelines. So we want, uh, to provide an opportunity for succeeding, uh, committee on appropriation members to amend and ratify its guidelines. So that will be all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, proponents. Are there any motions on the floor? Am I audible?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Are there any motions on the floor? Yes, Representative Amante?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to accept the resolution.
There has been a motion to accept the resolution. Are there any seconds?
Second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Are there any discussions? Once again, are there any discussions? Yes, Representative Mohammed?
Um, a point of inquiry to the, point of inquiry to the proponents, wait a minute, I'm having. Sorry about that. There is some feedback issue on my end. A point of inquiry to the, to the proponents, I'm looking at, uh, section six, uh, article three, section six. Uh, it's mentioned that an associate member shall be recognized as a member of the committee who is vested with the right to participate in the discussions and the decision-making process. Accordingly, an associate member shall be entitled to exercise limited voting rights during the budget deliberations and hearings, subject to the rules of the, uh, procedures of the committee. Now, um, I just want to clarify, what does limited voting rights mean? Uh, I've looked at the other articles, but yeah, I, I just want to clarify, is there a need for this limited voting rights? And what do they exactly mean, basically?
Proponents, please respond.
Okay, thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that question, Representative Mohammed. Uh, what we mean by limited voting rights, as I explained earlier, you can see that during the budget deliberation when it comes to, uh, re, uh, the sponsorship request or budget request on the lower and upper back. Um, the problem when it comes to allowing all members for voting is that, yes, representation, but with the function of this committee, it functions, uh, they, they function, uh, more flexible kase compared to the student assembly, meaning meetings are done before their session, before ju, before judicial session, and they are depending on the, on the, uh, request to, uh, have a budget deliberation by the executive committee. And the problem is that if we consider all the, uh, all the members' votes, and there's a risk kase, na, not everyone can attend that meeting. So it will hinder the budget deliberation process, because number one, the committee will not reach into quorum, and with that, cannot vote properly. That's why we ex, uh, we explicitly stated the difference between primary members and the associate members, because primary members are the core members of the co, of the, of the committee, and associate members are still members, but are not given the pressure to be in every budget deliberation, because the purpose of having associate members is for representation to the floor. And then we explicitly stated the difference, uh, the, the limited voting rights in, uh, article, article five, section eight, uh, paragraph A and B, lower back and upper back. So like I explained earlier, upper back, because, um, budget exceeding five thousand, uh, five thousand needs more, more perspective from different, uh, representations. So that's why we differentiated them. And I hope that answers your question, Representative Mohammed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is the inquiry satisfied?
Satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Representative Bitong, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I want, I want to ask a point of inquiry to proponents. So if you take a look at article five under budget deliberations, I wanted to ask if, will there be a need for a secretary for this committee to take minutes for the budget deliberations? Because I believe na, it would be desirable to have the report be included some minutes, so that, uh, the assembly and maybe even the general Siliman community can see or be informed of what has transpired during the deliberations. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that question, Representative Bitong. The reason why we didn't, uh, yes, we do acknowledge that there is a need for, uh, a member of the committee to take minutes of the, of the budget deliberation hearings and meetings. The reason why we did not explicitly state why there is the need to, for ha, to have a secretary is that we plan, uh, because, we plan to have the primary, the remaining primary members to be, uh, flexible as much as possible. So, yes, minutes will be taken during the meetings, but we do, we didn't designate a specific primary member to hold, uh, the position as secretary, because that limits their function, and we don't want to limit the function of the primary members, because we are already, we, because of the assumption that this committee will, uh, function in a flexible manner. So we don't know that a secretary is present, so we have to elect a assistant secretary. So, and what if both of them are not present? That, uh, that presents a problem to the committee and more, it defeats its purpose being a flexible committee. Um, outsourcing can be an option for this committee when it comes to minutes. The executive committee, the secretariat, has expressed support. When an organization needs minutes, they can call upon members of the secretariat committee who are able to take minutes, and they can do so. And I hope that answers your question, Representative Bitong. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Satisfied, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Rep.
Further discussions? Representative Galasang, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like a point of inquiry to the proponents, Rep. And about in regards to the committee report, um, can the assembly floor still question the budget proposals stipulated in the committee reports during session? And does it imply that the budget proposals asked by the committee be automatically approved or evolved? Pagyapun siya na, i-accept sa floor?
The question stands. Proponents, please respond. Representative Tevez, would you like to respond?
So the main, uh, system that has been placed here, pod sa resolution is that, once it goes through na, the budget deliberations to the committee and appointments or come up, kay, sila, ana, amo furnish a report to the assembly. And once they present that report, it's similar to committee reports where the floor can ask questions or make recommendations. However, it won't be as deliberate na as the budget proposals that we've been doing for the past semesters.
Is the inquiry satisfied, Representative?
Uh, a follow-up na, does that mean na, um, committee report approved na siya didn't so? Or does it still need to be accepted by the floor?
Representative Ozawa, would you like to respond?
For that, Representative Galasang, uh, no delay is she automatically approved by the committee. It has to go through the floor, through the committee report. And the goal for this basically is to cut short the budget deliberation, because, uh, when electing members for the Committee on Appropriation, uh, it is with the assumption already that the members elected there are experts when it comes to finances, budget deliberation, and budget management. So, yes, a committee report will be furnished for the approval of the floor. I hope that answers your question, Representative Galasang. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representatives. Further discussions? Representative Mohammed, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I have a question for the proponents again. So the resolution claims that this committee will make budget appro, appro, approvals more efficient, more effective, right? Yeah, as by avoiding prolonged plenary sessions as seen in whereas clause seven and eight. But given that article four and then furthermore in article five, it still requires multiple steps such as referrals, deliberations, and other reports within five working days, for example. Is there not a risk that this new layer could actually slow down unurgent funding requests instead of speeding them up? So if, if so, then how does the assembly, or how the, how does the committee, uh, rather, ensure this committee streamlines the process rather than creating a new bottleneck in this case?
The inquiry stands. Proponents, please respond.
Thank you for that. Uh, thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the question, Representative Mohammed. Yes, there are other steps taken here to ensure accountability and transparency, but unlike the current system right now, where the executive committee heavily ri, relies on our sessions, this, uh, provides them with the opportunity for them to set their budget deliberation meetings. As seen in referrals, they can send a referral to the student assembly that they request budget deliberations. For example, right after the regular session, they can immediately send another budget deliberation para, they can present it early on. The, the goal here is to allow the executive committee to properly plan out their, uh, their budget proposals with the opportunity that they, they themselves can set these meetings. And I hope that answers your question, Representative Mohammed. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is the inquiry satisfied, Representative?
Satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I be recognized to expound further?
Go ahead, Representative.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So in addition to, to all of that, this, we believe that this doesn't hamper down or doesn't add additional unnecessary bureaucracy to the, the financing system here in the SUSG, because in speaking as well as a former executive, uh, executive committee chairperson, and my, on my observations, executive committee chairs have to wait for the assembly to meet in plenary sessions, in our regular sessions, even special sessions. So they are highly dependent on the, the entire assembly's time, and their events can be spread across different dates that will prevent them from even, from receiving their cash advances if needed, even if they had gotten their budget, budget proposal approved beforehand, before, like much time beforehand during a session of the assembly. This one can allow their budget proposals to be accepted within the week, because again, they're, they're only waiting for us to conduct our sessions on Sundays, on the first and third Sundays, and sometimes special sessions. But this one can allow these budget proposals to be passed within, during the week, and then only for the assembly to recognize the decision later on. So with this, we believe that this will make faster the process of getting, getting the finances for the executive committees and other people and entities who wish to avail of funds from the SUSG.
Thank you for that, Representative. Yes, Representative Galasang, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. On preliminary question, uh, ano sa among, then, have a need like deadline on the budget proposals? And when they submit it, would the, um, student assembly to be included in the regular session?
The inquiry stands. Proponents, please respond. The inquiry stands. Proponents, please respond.
Can the question be repeated? Thank you very much.
Um, I'm asking if na by that like some budget proposals, does it have a deadline? And when dapat siya isubmit ipar na include sa regular session? Like similar to our resolutions na Thursday, like na ang date dapat ma-pass daw ipar na include siya. Does the budget proposals also have that same like system and a deadline? Like in general, Rep? If a building up?
Proponents, please respond.
To answer that question, there is a section here in B, Budget Deliberation. The Committee on Appropriation shall in its authority decline proposals from the entities of the SUSG to send to the student assemblies official email beyond 5:00 PM of at most two days before the date of the budget meeting.
Um, I'm asking regarding pa siya sa, uh, like student assembly? Cause ako magong like main question is that with this committee, does that imply that the budget proposals, like ilang deadline will be much earlier for it to be discussed? Cause diba like it stated here na once ma, ano like budget proposals, three day, three working days from the date of notification, ah, like pag-schedule sa meeting of the, um, deliberations of that? Ipar na include siya sa committee report, like, does that like ma early bang deadline for the budget proposals?
Representative Azul, you're recognized.
For that, thank you, uh, thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that question, Representative Galasang. The current deadline for, uh, the Executive Committee to pass their budget proposal, I believe is Friday, 5:00 PM. But the Chair, the Speaker of the House intends to amend that to similar deadlines for the representative to pass their re- resolution, which is on Thursday, 5:00 PM. And for your other question, uh, in, in hindsight, it may look like it will, uh, move their deadline earlier. But you have to remember that this, that, that, the date set by the koan, by the referral is made by the Executive Committee. So sila giha pun amo dictate kung when ang, ang budget, ang budget deliberations ma-happen and in turn, when sila mo-submit sa ilang, uh, budget proposals. So it also gives them the flexibility and the, uh, easier for them to plan out their events without being, uh, uh, tied to the regular sessions sa Assembly. So they can do it earlier or delay. So it, so basically this, uh, resolution gives them the flexibility to de- to determine when, when they want to hold budget deliberations and in turn, when they can submit their, uh, budget proposals. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is the inquiry satisfied, Representative?
Uh, satisfied right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representatives. Further discussions? Once again, we are on the main motion to accept the resolution. Are there any further discussions? Going once, going twice. Chair hears none. Are there any objections to the main motion? Going once, going twice, Chair hears none. The Chair now puts into vote the main motion to accept the resolution. Those who are in favor, please raise your hand.
Giving the representatives another three seconds to cast their votes. Mr. Chair, there are thirty-six votes for those in favor of the resolution.
Thank you, secretaries. Please, uh, lower your hands.
Mr. Chair, I can do it. Okay.
Thank you, Representative. Those who are not in favor, please raise your virtual hand. Going once, going twice. Are there any abstentions? Going once, going twice. With thirty-six in favor, zero not in favor, and zero abstentions, this resolution has been accepted by the Assembly. The Chair would now like to relinquish his seat to the Speaker of the Student Assembly. Are there any objections? Going once, going twice, Chair hears none. The Chair is, uh, the Chair has been relinquished to the Speaker of the Student Assembly.
Thank you, Deputy Minority Leader. May the, may the Chair request an informal round of applause to our Deputy Minority Leader. Good job. Okay. Moving forward, our next, the next resolution, following the amended order of business, we have a resolution requesting the Siliman University Administration to the visit through FMAS to conduct an inspection and structure evaluation of the Pop Fin Arts Department Building, also known as Dungon. With that, the Chair summons the proponent to present his resolution.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Chair. Um, once again, good afternoon to the Honorable Assembly. So, this resolution is basically a resolution on requesting for an inspection and structure evaluation of the College of Performing in Visual Arts, Fine Arts Department Building, also known as Dungon. Because this is in response to the recent calamity that occurred on September thirty, where there was heavy rain and then an earthquake. And the reason why this was a resolution is because, um, Dungon is really prone to flooding. Like, it's been happening ever since the Fine Arts Department moved into that building located near Arenia Gallery. And the fact that it's been, uh, it's been flooding, it's just constantly flooding and at every time, nice heavy rain. It's becoming a hazard for the students. And it has disrupted our works, like not only like, the, it has affected the instruments. It has res- um, affected the finals project, midterm project of the students occupying the building. And it has also been a hazard, like the flooding mismo, for the students themselves. Because what happened magod on September thirty is that because of the intense rain, nagflood man siya. And that, like, of sa students, uh, who are residing in Dungon, at na Dungon, in Siliman, had to respond to the flooding. Like sila pamay ang, what they call that, first responders to, uh, to safeguard the instruments, the projects. Kay if wala, then gubadyo tani ang kuwan. And those projects are like big parts dito sa tamong grade, like maudyo ng grado naman. And then, the thing is, is that Dungon is also very naive, a step rat problem. So, the flooding incident is more alarming, so, eh, because of high risk of leptospirosis. And, yeah, it's, uh, the flooding, like, picture is, eh, is attached re sa Appendix A. And then, after that, uh, after September thirty, the flooding and the earthquake, the college, uh, the College Council actually collated and made their feedbacks or their concerns and filed a letter of complaint. And it's attached re pod sa Appendix B. So basically, the reason why this was made as a resolution instead of a communication letter is that there was already a communication letter forwarded to FMAS sa twenty-twenty-three pa lang. Like be- formerly, before pa siya, it was known as FMAS. It was filled buildings and grounds. So the letter is attached to Appendix C. So, with that, and I consulted with FMAS, I told them regarding our situation. And they told us during our consultation, oh, yeah, they know the flooding problem. So the thing is, they haven't put priority to our, um, building. And that's really a concern since all of the Fine Arts students of, of Siliman occupy that building. Like wala milang building. And it's so, already a safety hazard and hazard. So, we're really trying to, uh, put priority. And this resolution will also aid, um, help, uh, our college dean since he is working on, uh, raising the concerns to the administration. So it's basically, uh, putting highlight the current situation that the College of Performing in Visual Arts is currently facing. So the resolution would be a conduct of like inspection and structure evaluation. And that if they have, I believe, they have already plans on, on what to do for the building. Pero, it's been, like, well, occasion put into priority because unfortunately, the college mismo is not, what they call that, really priority sa Siliman right now. Especially since we're, because we're a school college, so, ganun ganun ra. So, aside from that, the results of the, of the inspection and structure evaluation would be provided to the Dean of Pop, ipar ayang mayus, when he is talking and consulting with the admin. It's basically a backing from the student, uh, the SUSG. So, yeah, that's basically the overview of this resolution.
Thank you, Representative Galasang. Are there any motions to accept, to adopt the resolution? Representative Bakaruba, you're recognized.
Thank you for the, the recognition, Mr. Chair. I move to adopt this resolution.
Seconded. Properly moved and seconded. Floor is now open for discussion. Representative Bitong, you're recognized.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. I would like to ask a point of inquiry to the proponent, like curious question lang ko. During the consultation with FMAS, was the proponent able to ask the insights of the officer FMAS regarding this resolution?
Um, originally, um, I referred to them the letter of complaint that was, that was collated by the College Council. And I asked them if, like, um, there are, um, basically the letter of complaint asked, diba like, on drainage system ganun there sa Dungon? And then they told me about the situation, about how Dungon is like lower yang ground level compared to like sa road. So like, the water goes there dud initially. And then, I asked them if like, if it's possible na, uh, na lang siya ihimo na lang siya instead of having it as a drainage system resolution. It would just be an inspection and structure evaluation? Because, I'm not certain of like the specifics of the plans nila sa kuwan, pero they're already eyeing on it because on Dungon, pero again, because the college isn't a benefit. Not necessarily benefiting, pero like, nilike siya, um, ben- beneficial. I don't know the term, basta something along the lines. And that, that's why they haven't urgency with that, uh, that building. Pero, apparently naanay kuwan dud, um, FMAS, like they already have their, like, all the projects that they will be doing and stuff like that. And this resolution would just be pushing further na, papalihok na dyan.
Satisfied, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Further, uh, further discussion? Representative Tevez followed by Representative Valdezir.
Thank you for the, the acknowledgement, Mr. Chair. Point of inquiry to the proponents. So the main rationale of this resolution is to request an inspection and structure evaluation. And based on how we interpret your explanation, is that the main goal is for FMAS to do something regarding the heavy flooding? Since this was something na give, push na years ago and then wala gitagad. So since the scope of this resolution is on the evalu- structure inspection evaluation, it's quite narrow. How, what is the assurance that there will be tangible outcomes that actually come out of this resolution? That actually have impact on the concerns that are being raised right now?
So the thing is, um, I'll say it again na, um, our dean is currently in contact with the administration in regards to the building itself. Because last Friday, um, a professor who is also the dean of our college did not conduct classes because he was, um, consulting with the admin. So, yes, uh, this resolution is basically to support our college dean with his, uh, push for something to be done sa Dungon.
Satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Further discussions? Pres- uh, wait for, uh, Representative Valdezir was first.
Thank you so, yes, Mr. Chair. I have the, the same sentiments with Representative Tevez, so I will not be raising it anymore. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Representative Mohamed, go ahead. Representative Mohamed?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Um, I, as, uh, as reading this resolution, I can see that it's more or less a prioritization or a recommendation basically to the FMAS to prioritize an expect, inspection or a structure evaluation of the Dungon site. Now, um, I would like to ask the proponent, uh, Rep. Galasang is, do you intend this resolution to just purely be recommendatory? Or perhaps do you have a plan to have it carry reporting obligations back to the Assembly or back to you, for example?
Uh, with our mechanization that we have put in, it's more of at the inspection and evaluation, as our so, verdict clause, that it would be provided restadine. So it's more so not, it's more so for urgency, like, type of, so, basta, it's for supporting documents dud siya sa among dean. Cause he's really trying to kuwan dud, what Pop, like, out there is working on it. And as college representatives, it's the least that we can do. And I'm hoping na, having this, like, nagikantad dud sa SUSG mismo, would highlight the fact that, uh, like, the student's safety, dud. It's been going on since twenty-twenty-three. There has been, there's nothing done dud. So it's more so to, for, to also raise awareness in the sense.
Satisfied, Representative?
Um, follow-up question, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, sorry. I would, since, uh, basically this resolution is to strike urgency considering the recent flooding. And I'm sure considering that the Philippines is a, is a flood-prone country, we would have another sort of flooding in the future, in the near future. So, but the thing is that this resolution does not specify a timeline that would require FMAS to report. So in, in the event that this resolution would be, uh, approved, for example, how, how would, uh, how would, how can you, let's say, track compliance? Or, uh, un- understand if the FMAS is acting or not, basically?
Um, is it possible to, uh, repeat your question, Representative?
Okay, uh, let me repeat it again, uh, sorry about that. Uh, since this, uh, resolution is essentially an, uh, a recommendation or cer- certainly wants to strike urgency within the, uh, FMAS. Now considering that Philippines is a flood-prone country and we would expect, uh, another bouts of flooding in who knows in the future. The thing is that this resolution does not specify a timeline. So, I'm just asking to you as the proponent, how can you track compliance? For example, if this resolu- resolution would be passed, if the F- For example, if this resolu- resolution would be passed, if the FMAS would not act, for example. I've said for example a lot, but yeah, if the FMAS would not act, how can you track the compliance basically? Or do you have a sa- timeline that you can give to FMAS?
Um, it's not specifically like. Like explicitly said, it's a resolution pero with the result further clause that this resolution be effective immediately and it is a request. Letter and I believe on pag trap and I'm not certain, correct me if I'm wrong pero. Um, committee on resolutions, or resolution committee, like sila may mukuan anak. Uh, it's to ensure na this request letter is sent. Because at the end of the day, even, ang kuwan rako is the reason why wala na akong gimbutang uglike date. Like kung when dud, it's because it should be like as soon as possible but also discretion sa FMAS.
Is your inquiries satisfied, Representative Mohamed?
Satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Okay, further discussions? Representative Renasho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, inquiry from the proponent, uh, on your consultation to FMAS, uh. Correct me if I heard it right, you said that, uh, it's not their priority during the first, uh, first letter. There you may. Address to them? Am I? Am I correct?
Is it possible to repeat, um, Representative, because major choppy and left it to end?
Uh, upon your, uh, consultation. To FMAS. As you said before that there's already a com- a letter, uh, twenty twenty-three. And then you said, correct me if I heard it right, uh, it's not their priority at that time. To address the issue? Is that correct?
Uh, in the sense, because when I consulted with the former governor, who actually was the person who. Awarded that letter to buildings and grounds now FMAS. Um, when I asked them, they acknowledged that they already did receive it, pero. Um, when I talked to the former governor, there wasn't any action done by the. By buildings and grounds now FMAS. So communication, we already sent a communication letter and there was nothing done during consultations, we acknowledged the problem pero. It's not priority dud, cause apparently they have like a timeline dud, but it should be implemented. But the thing is, it's a risk namang dud sa students, so it should be prioritized. That's why this resolution was the last resort.
Okay, uh, this, uh, other questions and this is not to, uh, this question is not to address to the proponent but to all of us. And this is coming very alarming, especially, uh, not addressing issues. Uh, from the students coming, uh, it's very alarming that the. The administration is not responding to the needs of the students and this is not only, uh. Uh, sa Kupa lang and this is all of us. In fact, we from the Divinity School, uh. Many times we sent complaints, damage report and there's no response. That's why we opt to, uh, be, you know. The, kana mga rali rali na wilga wilga nami. And now Kupa, and I think. I don't know, this is my observation, dagayan mga small colleges, and wala nila gina mind. And I don't know what would be the reason behind. And I don't know if there, if the assembly, the S U S G. Would do something for this, not only for Kupa, for all of the colleges and departments about these issues. Not only for the flooding, not only for the, uh, earthquake. Other issues like equipments and the increase of the miscellaneous. Uh, before way back twenty twenty-three, are we really, ano? Uh, feel the increase, the services from the administration? And that, uh, that question would be, you know, to the assembly, not only for the, the proponent. Thank you.
Thank you Representative. Are there any, is there a response from the, from Representative Kalasang? Go ahead.
Uh, is it possible to make an amendment to this resol- or insert something?
Yes, as a pro- as a proponent, you are able to make amendments.
Okay, um, thank you for that, you for the recognition, Mr. Chair, um. Um, I would like amend by adding a, another so further clause. Uh, after resolve further clause number four, that this inspection and evaluation be done. Before the, uh, within the semester.
This inspection and evaluation. Be done before the end of the semester?
Yes.
Uh, which semester are you referring to Representative?
Uh, the, yeah, first.
I'll just make it the end of the first semester. And may the chair also recommend that you also include the academic year?
Yes, uh, for school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Five, twenty twenty-six, okay. I'll use, the chair is typing it back right now. Okay, there's been a motion to add. An, a new resolved further clause after number four, reading, resolve further that this inspection and evaluation be done before. Be done before the end of the first semester of school year twenty twenty-five and. School year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Are there any seconds?
Second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussions? Representative Hamera?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Question to the proponent, uh, with this amendment, was this one of? The topics brought up in your consultations to FMAS?
Question stands, proponent?
Apology like na, nakamit dud, pero during our consultation, they did say na. You should have it formalized with the S U S G para maputin to priority.
Uh, I'm sorry, it's choppy on my end.
Okay, the representative responded to us that, um, okay, you know what, go ahead, Representative Kalasang.
Uh, basically during my consultation with FMAS, they said that we should have it formalized with the S U S G so that it would be put into priority.
Thank you. So just to clarify, the timeline will depend on this resolution?
Yes, considering after the questions raised by Representative Mohamed. I think it's better to have it nalang with it in the semester.
Satisfied, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any further discussions on the amendment? Going once, going twice, chair is done with unanimous consent, this amendment is carried. Further discussions? Again, further discussions. Uh, the chair, if the chair may add something, uh, to the proponent. Is just on the formatting of the resolution, kindly move the. For done this October and then authored by and approved by the names, please, um. Move them also as well to fix the margin, the margins of the rest of the resolution. I'll do the not, that's okay. Further discussions? Going once, going twice, chair is done, will not put the question. All those in favor of this resolution with this amendment, please raise your hand.
Mr. Chair, there are thirty-two votes for those in favor.
Thank you, thirty-two. The chair will lower all the hands. All those not in favor? All those in abstention?
Mr. Chair, there are three in the abstention.
Thank you. With thirty-two in favor and three in abstention, this resolution is accepted. Congratulations to the proponent. Proceed, moving forward, we have an next resolution, a resolution institutionalizing a Siliman University. Student Government Student Internship Financial Aid Program through the S U S G Educational Services Committee. The chair summons the proponents to present the resolution.
Thank you for the.
Apologies.
Thank you for the acknowledgement, Mr. Chair. So. Upon reflecting through some insights from the respective floors and also in order to allow for further consultation with the business and finance. The Business and Finance Office, Kai, the proponents would like to move to withdraw this resolution. Just to, just in order to close the gaps between our consultation with finance and B F O.
Apologies, Representative. Can you repeat that again? I have to step out for a few seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the proponents would like to move to withdraw this resolution for now. To address gaps along with our consultations with finance and to although, also further consult with B F O regarding this resolution. To ensure that its feasibility is effective.
Okay, there's been a motion to withdraw this resolution from, from the floor. This requires a two-thirds vote from the assembly. So with that, are there any seconds? Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor of the withdrawal of this resolution.
Mr. Chair, there are thirty-two in favor to go with your all this resolution. Correct, I'm sorry, thirty-three.
Okay, thank you. Thirty-three with all those not in favor? All those in abstention? Okay, with thirty-three in favor, the motion is carried and this resolution is withdrawn. Thank you proponents. Next resolution on our agenda, we have a resolution amending resolution number twenty-three. The chair will not read the full title anymore. And considering that the chair is one of the proponents, the chair would like to relinquish his seat to the speaker for temporary. Are there any objections? Going once, going twice, chairs none, siding seat is relinquished to the speaker for temporary.
Okay, following the order of business, we have a resolution. Amending resolution number twenty-three, series of twenty twenty-four to twenty five, twenty-five, or simply. A resolution implementing an annual university-wide first aid response training. For volunteers through the Siliman University Student Government Health Emergency Response Team or the S U S G H E R T. The chair summons the proponents of this resolution.
Thank you, Anna Speaker. Okay, so, good afternoon to the assembly. I will be presenting our resolution, which is amending resolution number twenty-three. Or simply a resolution implementing an annual university-wide first aid response training for volunteers to the S U S G health response. As is your hurt team, or, okay. So with this, resolution twenty-three was passed in the thirty-fourth student assembly. And upon reviewing, upon reviewing the provisions of this, I, I and. And one of my co-proponents caught two. Uh, two sets of problems with the resolution that we would like to address today. The first is that it says resolved further in, uh, whereas number four. In whereas for, says resolve further that the participation in the training shall be strictly voluntary. Then the fa- then later on in the resolution, it stated that. Resolve further that all colleges within Siliman University shall send a number of three student volunteers. So they are. They are contradictory to each other because, one, it says voluntary, but then, then a subsequent result further. States that you are, they are being mandated to send volunteers ju- with the word shall, because it says shall send, so that's, uh. That is a contradictory in the resolution. Another one of like, another one I want to, would like to point out. Or we'd like to address is that in resolve number six. Sorry, sorry, whereas six, resolve further that S U S G H E R T shall propose a budget for the university-wide first aid training to the student assembly. So of course, standard procedure, the, uh, executive committee will send a budget proposal to the assembly. However, the, the, the next result, result further stated that. The S U S G institutionalize, uh, university-wide first aid training fund. So with that. It goes, it becomes redundant because first, they have to propose a budget, but then, I mean, the. S U S G will have a training fund, so. In that, if that's the case, there's no need to create of there, there has, you have to choose one or the other, because. Proposing a budget and then having a fund. Through the, through the S U S G Finance Committee no less, creates, uh, creates also a contradiction and redundancy in. Managing to get funds for the, the training for this. So that's why we are proposing that instead. We'll just stick to having a, the budget proposal system instead of making a training fund. So that, uh, there, so that S U S G H E R T can benchmark themselves from the previous year, how much budget they need, so they may propose it to the. Assembly instead of creating a fund, especially since the training fund doesn't actually state how much the fund should be in the, in the original resolution. And then with that, other amendments we made, uh, address certain ways of further im-. Improving the implementation and interpretation of this resolution such as, uh. First, first notable one is that. We, we want to include that S U S G H E R T may partner with any external organizations and entities for training. During my consultations with Sir Abe Cadilinia, our advisor, he stated that the university presently already has. A working relationship or connection, or a MOA rather with one rescue. And they're always willing to provide training for first aid, so. In conjunction with this resol- or in connection with this resolution, that's why we wish not, we would want to give. Additional avenues for S U S G H E R T to have other partners for the training. Then further ones is that. Okay, further one is, the next, uh, minute is that the original resolution specifically stated that, that. The training will be held at the P R C Negros Oriental Chapter, but then at the same time. It states that when exactly should, when should the training take place? So. Having both a strict location, which is outside the campus and having a deadline for. Having a deadline for when the event should, should be, to take place. Can create problems because in the first place, it highly depends on the availability of the person, the people hosting. Which is the Philippine Red Cross, they may, their schedules may vary between different times and especially. Given their nature of work and as well, that it's highly dependent on, yeah, the booking of their venue and. If we put a strict deadline on when it be, on when it be done, S U S G H E R T can be held liable if P R C is not. Is not available on the stipulated time that the resolution states. So that's why we're trying to make it flexible enough that. The training course conducted shall be done whenever practicable or practicable. And that, uh, we got, we had a little bit more time for them to create, for them to conduct the event. Then we're also trying, we're also finding ways to help address marketing or being able to get enough people to do the, to do the training such as H E R T Committee shall maintain an updated database of trained volunteers, then also coordinating with the councils and strengthening the coordination of the deans, directors and heads of the different academic units and departments here because it is, uh, it is important that each college and each academic unit have volunteers and people who are willing and ready rather, ready to administer first aid in cases of emergency and and disasters. So we're trying to further help our academic units get get support and, and get their training done. And with that, that about sums up all of our current amendments right now and I'm ready for, we're ready for any inquiries.
Thank you, Representative. Are there any motions to adopt this resolution? Yes, Representative Balbon.
Thank you for the acknowledgement, Miss, Madam Chair. I move to accept this resolution.
Properly moved and seconded, the floor is now open for discussions. Yes, Representative Makarubo.
Uh, thank you for the acknowledgement, Madam Speaker. In one of your amendments, there is resolved clause that states that a certification valid for two years shall be awarded to trainees who successfully complete the training and pass the required assessments as the appendix C. So I have two questions regarding this resolved further. My first question is because you're partnering with external organizations, usually their certification is at different years. So what if their certification is supposed to be valid for three years, but because the resolution is being limited to two? And my second question is that there, you place the appendix C, but it's only onto appendix A in the resolution?
Okay. Thank you for that inquiry, Representative. So the first, uh, the first address, yes, we, we were just following the previous resolutions certification of two years. So we just carry that over to our current amendment, but it has been brought forward that there are, yeah, that it was brought up beforehand, before the session, your concern, uh, a similar concern. So with that, uh, I'll be proposing an amend, an amendment to that specific, uh, that amendment in regards to that. So and in the regards to your appen- appendix C, it's the address, it still addresses the previous resolutions app- appendix C. So it's not in regards to appendix C of this resolution. So it's because we're just amending the previous one. So the changes will be made to the original one where append, appendix C will still be present.
Okay, thank you. My inquiry is satisfied. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, I'll be sending our amendment to the group chat.
Okay, while waiting for the amendment to be sent to the group chat, are there any further discussions or inquiries from the floor? Yes, Representative Chong.
Thank you for the recognition, Madam Chair. Regarding about the two-year certification, since this was a resol- from my previous B A rep- representative, the reason why it was two years because we had a discussion with the H E R T and they mentioned that they will be only given the certification and it will be only for two years. It will be valid only for two years. That's why we have placed it two years exactly.
Um, I, can I also clarify also my questions because they added an extra provision that they will uh, they will partner with other external organizations. Earlier in the other, so it was they will partner with the P R C through the S U R C Y. Then this time they're including other organizations which may have different certification periods.
Yes, Representative Ramante.
Thank you for the recognition, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move to amend the relevant, the relevant resolve further clause to read. Resolve further that a certification shall be awarded to trainees who successfully complete the train, the training and pass the required assessments. So in, so basically it's to remove valid for two years from the resolve further statement. Madam Speaker, your mutant.
There's been a motion to amend this resolve further clause. Are there any seconds to this motion?
Second.
Any further discussions? Going once, going twice? Chairs none? The chair will now put the question on the amendment of this resolve further clause. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Giving the representatives another three seconds to cast their votes. Madam Chair, there are thirty-four votes to those in favor.
Thank you, Representative. All those not in favor, I, please, Mr. Speaker, please. Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker. All those not in favor, please raise your hand. All those who abstain, please raise your hand. Thirty-two in favor, zero not in favor and one abstention. The motion is carried. This resolve further clause is hereby amended. Further discussions on this resolution?
Oh, Madam Speaker, if I may, I will be making a technical amendment with your, with your permission, of course, that uh, in our matrix table, I have noticed that, I just noticed that we've been using different shades of red in our amendments table. So just as a technical amendment, we'll be making the, the shade of red for the font consistent throughout the document.
Noted, Representative. Since this is a technical amendment, it's hereby automatically carried. Any further discussions on this resolution? Going, yes, Representative Chavez.
Thank you for your recognition, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to make a parliamentary inquiry. Um, uh, under resolved further, um, under the first resolved further statement, um, at the matrix of amendments, um, since the S U S G H E R T will be partnering with other external organizations and entities for the training, um, I'd like to ask the proponents if, um, they've been given information as to which specific external organizations or entities, since, um, according to um, since by law here in the Philippines, there are specific entities that are o- that are accredited to conduct, um, first aid training providers and it would be, um, helpful perhaps. So, um, I would also like to make an amendment to that as well, um, to add external, uh, to add, um, to add, uh, to change rather, um, external organizations and entities accredited to conduct the training. So as not to, um, nullify um, the, the, um, credits for the, um, years of validity of the certification.
Thank you, Representative. So there's been a motion to amend resolve further clause, the one you see on screen colored in red. Instead of partner with any other external organizations and entities, it will be added with and entities accredited to conduct the training. Are there any seconds to this motion?
Second.
Second.
Any discussions?
I would like to, Madam Speaker, I'd like to answer the question of Representative Chavez.
Go ahead, Representative.
Thank you. So in addition to One Rescue, which I was informed by Sir Abe, it was also brought up during my consultations with H E R T and the executive branch. They mentioned that there's also the City Disaster Risk Management Office. So they're als-, they've also done previous trainings with the university or in other organizations here. So those were the two organizations that were mentioned in our consultations, but we didn't want to specifically mention it in the result further. So there's still flexibility and I am thankful to your proposed amendment because that will definitely add better credibility to the, yeah, external organizations and entities. So thank you very much for that, Representative, Representative Chavez.
Thank you, Representative. Any further discussions on this amendment? Going once, going twice? Any objections? Going once, going twice? Chairs none? Motion is carried. Any further discussions on the resolution? Going once. Yes, Representative Gunot.
Thank you for the recognition, Madam Chair. Regarding the A, resolve further in the amendment matrix or the matrix of amendments, um, resolve further that all training fees of these elected student volunteers shall be subsidized by the S U S G to support, open parenthesis, um, question mark, close parenthesis, campus-wide emergency response capability. Is this a technical error?
Yes, Madam, Madam Speaker, yes, that is a, that is a technical amendment, a technical error.
Since it's a technical error, the Assembly should just take it as a technical amendment. Motion is carried. Any further discussions on the resolution? Going once? Going twice? Chairs none? The chair will now put the question on the adoption of this resolution as amended. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, there are thirty-five votes to those in favor.
Thank you. Please place your hands down. All those not in favor, please raise your hand. All those who abstain, please raise your hand. With thirty-five in favor, zero not in favor and zero abstentions, motion is carried. Congratulations, proponents. The chair would now like to relinquish the presiding seat to the Speaker of the Student Assembly. Are there any objections? Chairs none? The presiding seat is relinquished.
Thank you, Madam Speaker for temporary. Following our order of business, our next item on the, on our agenda is the election of Ad-Hoc Constitutional Amendments Committee. As previously done in our, as done in our previous session, uh, I opened up a the new Ad-Hoc Constitutional Amendments Committee for for, fit for eighteen members as constitutional, uh, provision states that when we're going to amend the constitution, we need one-third of the assembly. So with this, it is the speakers' hope that each floor were able to uh, present a list of nominees for the members for the, of the committee. So with this, are there any motions? Uh, wait, would the floor like to have a short recess to finalize their list or shall we proceed? Okay. Majority for a leader. I got the thumbs up from the minority for leaders. So maybe if you can concur or if you wish to okay, the chair will just take that as, uh, as a general consent. So with this, the chair will suspend the session for seven minutes. So with this, the Chair will suspend the session for seven minutes. The order. With this, we'll now proceed to, we'll now proceed to the election of Ad-Hoc Constitutional Amendments Committee members. May the Chair hear from, possibly hear from either of the floor leaders regarding their, their list of nominees. Representative Amera.
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. For our floor, we have four of total nominations. That includes me and Representative Devesh, as long as two of the political science representatives that we have, which is Representative Dison and Representative Biskitado.
Okay, so thank you, minority floor. With this, the Chair will, will be individually asking the consent of each, of each nominee for, for record sake. Our speaker, pro tempore, do you accept the nomination?
Thank you for the acknowledgement, Mr. Chair. I will accept the nomination.
Okay. Representative Amera, our minority floor leader, do you accept?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair, yes, I accept.
Thank you, Representative Dison, do you accept the nomination, ah, sorry, yeah, the nomination. Representative Dison. Representative Amera.
Mr. Chair, I believe she's not in the call anymore. Is it alright to still nominate people who have left early?
Can I get the confirmation that, that she has left early due to other matters? Or is it that she just disconnected?
I'll confirm, Mr. Chair.
Okay. In the meantime, Representative Biskitado, do you accept the nomination? Is Representative Biskitado also in the call? Okay, so yeah, we'll get back to them. Majority floor, can I hear, yeah, can may I hear from your nominations?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, thank you for the recognition. We, first, we would like to raise parliamentary inquiry if the Speaker of the House is automatically a member of these, of this committee or it's... Dapat pa siya inominate?
For formality sake, please nominate the Speaker.
Okay. With that, Mr. Chair, we have eight nominations coming from the majority floor and one from the independent floor. First nomination is Representative Amante from the Graduate School. First nomination from the majority floor is Representative Kalasang. Second, Representative Ozawa. Third, Representative Makarubo. Fourth, Representative Milnalang. Fifth, Representative Maputi. Sixth, Representative Gunot. And seventh, Representative Billya Flores. That will be all, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Representative Ozawa, thank you, majority floor. It'll be one by one asking each representative if they accept the nomination. I, Representative Amante, accept the nomination. Representative Kalasang, do you accept?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Representative Ozawa?
I accept the nomination, Mr. Chair.
Representative Makarubo?
I accept the nomination, Mr. Chair.
Representative Milnalang?
I accept the nomination, Mr. Chair.
Representative Maputi?
I accept the nomination, Mr. Chair.
Representative Gunot?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair, I accept the nomination.
Representative Billya Flores?
I accept the nomination, Mr. Chair.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, wait, one, two. Okay, so far, we have ten, ten members, ten nominations. Uh, for the sake, for the sake of time, ah, yes, Representative Amera.
Is it alright to add, to add additional nominations, Mr. Chair, seeing that there's only ten?
Yes, my only.
Uh, I would like to nominate Representative Bitong and Representative Valiser, Representative Caminade and... Apologies. Representative... Apologies, wait. Kalumpang.
Thank you, minority floor leader. Representative Bitong, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I accept the nomination.
Representative Valiser?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I accept the nomination.
Representative Caminade?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I accept the nomination.
Representative Kalumpang?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I accept the nomination.
Okay, with this, we have fourteen nominations, but that's not including Representative Dison and Representative Biskitado. Uh, in light of this, the Chair would like to express now, this would, this would be a good start for now, just having fourteen members, then... Uh, we won't, we won't start, we won't close the nominations yet, but we can, but we can start first with these fourteen members. We can create a group chat and start planning, planning things around. Then later on, in the next session, which will be October nineteen, we can fill in the last four members. With, with that recommendation, this, is the assembly okay with that nomination? Can I please get consent?
May I be recognized, Mr. Chair?
Right, Representative.
Okay, thank you for the recognition. Is it for the benefit of the assembly, is it possible that those nominated representatives be sent to GCAM list? If I'm...
Okay, please give the Chair one minute, I will be, I'll be formulating the list. Or Representative, do you wish that to be sent now?
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, thank you for the recognition. Uh, the majority floor would like to include one more nomination.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for, thank you for that, Mr. Chair. Uh, for our nomination, we would like to nominate Representative Makahig, Mr. Chair.
Representative Makahig, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, representatives. Said, in the interest of time, the Chair will just take a picture of the, of his notes. And I'll send it to, I'll send it to the group chat. Okay. This, that's been sent and for, needless to say, SBT is for Representative Devesh and my no is supposed to be Representative Amera. And then, in the, in the interest of clarification, so with that, we have about fifteen members. So we're still open to three more and out of courtesy, we will be functionally including Representative Dison and Representative Biskitado as their nominees of the minority floor. So should there, is there room for, is there anyone who wishes to be a member of this committee? Since we have functionally one more slot. Okay, we can set, okay, we can set, we can settle that next session. So with this, uh, functionally, we will not be able to conclude official business yet since the committee has not been, enough, been, um, filled with all of its members. But we can still create our group chat on this and start preliminary preparations for this. So with that, for now, we will be tabling or postponing this. Can I request someone to make the motion to postpone this election to the next session? Representative Ozawa?
Mr. Chair, can we, uh, you have three more minutes to this discussion as we are, uh, we're finalizing our one last nomination?
Okay. The Chair will, the Chair will give three more minutes for that. Representative Amera?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair, we would like to nominate one more, uh, member.
Okay, who's, who do you, who do you nominate, Representative?
We would like to nominate Representative Balbon.
Representative Balbon, do you accept? Representative Balbon? Is Representative Balbon in the meeting? Okay.
She's connecting, Mr. Chair.
Okay. While waiting, Representative Dison, do you accept the nomination, seeing that you are back?
Um, I would just like to clarify, Mr. Chair, since I've already communicated with Representative Amera upon declining the nomination. I would like to opt out my name.
Okay. So Representative Dison, um, doesn't accept, doesn't accept the nomination. Representative Amera, do you accept this rejection?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Rejection's not the right word, but that's the quickest thing I could come up with. Okay, um, with that, we're down to one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen nominations. Wait, one, two, three, four, five, six... Yes. Seventeen, if we're also going to give the courtesy nomination of Representative Biskitado. Uh, majority floor, have you come to your final nominations yet? Representative Billya Flores?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair. Um, the majority floor would like to add Representative Inao as its nominees.
Representative Inao, do you accept the nomination?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair, I accept the nomination.
Thank you. Representative Balbon, I see you're back in the meeting, do you accept the nomination? Hmm, yeah. Representative Balbon?
I believe she's having connectivity issues, Mr. Chair.
If she can just send a message in the, in our chat room here in Google Meet, that can be counted as her accepting.
I, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, oh, okay.
Okay. Representative Balbon has accepted the nomination, thank you, Representative. And with that, again, we'll be giving Representative Biskitado the courtesy to, to accept or decline the nomination in the next session. So once again, may the Chair request someone to move to postpone this election? Representative Ozawa?
Thank you for the recognition, Mr. Chair, I move to postpone the, this election.
Second.
After movement, second, are there any discussions going once, going twice? Chair is none, unanimous consent, this motion is carried. We'll now proceed to our other matters, thank you, representatives, for, for our fruitful discussion of our agenda. Moving forward, we now have our other matters. Uh, represent, our committee on appro, sorry, committee on appointments wish to, uh, bring up another matter. I'll be giving the floor to them. Chairperson, Kalasang? Once again, are there...
Um, may I be recognized, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Representative.
Other matters, no, no, just to fun, because I just got recognized.
Yes, you may bring up your matter.
Okay, thank you so much. So apologies about pronounced, here on behalf of the Committee on Appointments, we, the committee, have decided to open up the committee to two new members, from the minority and majority. Because one of our members from the committee, her health has not been well. And because of that, like, we are having difficulty reaching forums when it comes to discussions and appointments. It is also one of the reasons why, um, we were not able to present a committee report. And, yeah, so we're basically opening up to three new members because we are also going to work with the executive. Because one of the goals of co-op is to open some positions of the executive committee to the student body. So we need a bit more help. So, yeah, um, if the minority and majority... So, yeah, um, if the Minority and Majority Floors could convene and nominate one person from their floor that is not a Committee Chair, that is not the majority, the floor leader and Deputy Floor Leader.
Representative, could you make the motion to open the nomination for for two more members for the Committee?
Okay, I would like to make a motion to open the Committee on Appointments to two new members. Yeah.
Seconds?
One.
Okay, properly moved and seconded, nominations are now open. We'll be accepting two more members. The Chair will give about three minutes for the floors to discuss.
Thank you for the recognition, Mister Chair. The Majority Floor would like to nominate Representative Chavez.
Representative Chavez, do you accept the nomination?
Thank you for the recognition, Mister Chair. Yes, I accept the nomination.
Thank you. That's coming from the Majority Floor. Minority Floor, do you have your nomination?
Thank you for the recognition, Mister Chair. We nominate Representative Caminade.
Representative Caminade, do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Representatives. With this, are there any motions to close? Representative Azova.
Thank you for the recognition, Mister Chair. I move to close the nomination.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, given that there are only two nominees, as requested, the Chair will recognize Representative Chavez and Representative Caminade as the newest members of the Committee on Appointments. Congratulations to our new members and congratulations to Committee on Appointments. Uh, officers, do we have any further matters to bring up? Okay, Representative Estelios, go ahead.
Am I audible? Hello?
Yes, Representative, you're audible.
Hello, good evening, Representatives. Thank you for the recognition as well. So, this is also to point out that we already have finished so far the canvassing for the, for our polo shirts. Raf, next slide please. So, as we all know that this currently the design of our polo shirt, I will be putting in our Facebook page or the private Facebook page all of our options as of the moment for the printing or for the release of our polo shirt. So as of right now, we have threads, embroidery, dumaguete for five hundred ninety pesos, icon steps for five hundred eighty pesos, ads edge or ADS edge for five hundred fifty pesos, royal stitch for six hundred thirty to six hundred eighty. While this also has two prices that also varies from each price, as well as Venmark which is for six hundred fifty pesos. And additionally, for this six hundred fifty pesos from Venmark, this is also from Davau, however, this is also going to be, this is also guaranteed to us that the quality of this print for this shirt is also in good quality. As well, move to the next slide please. Um, we have already canvassed as well for our lanyard. So this is one of our designs. Can you move on to the next slide, Raf? This is our two proposed designs. So this one is more, as of right now, we're still convening on the colors that we would want for the lanyard. However, we are also proposing that this could also vary from each of the colleges, like, for example, there's green, blue, for example, that could also vary from what college you're from. If the Assembly is also preferable to that, or would the Assembly prefer a uniform color? Additionally, we also canvassed the prices for the lanyards, which is from so far as also communicating with Mister Chair that our budget for each lanyard would be one hundred pesos. However, as we canvassed, each lanyard would cost around seventy pesos in royal stitch. So as of right now, that is the cheapest one we found in dumaguete. We will be posting this in the private Facebook page for the lanyard tonight as you're still finalizing this, but for the poll for the printable of the shirt, that will be sent right now. So that's all from me and from the Technicals and Infomedia Committee.
Thank you, Infotech. We'll just be opening that discussion in our private Facebook group, so in the interest of time. But thank you very much for your canvassing and also as well goes to Logistics Committee for, our thanks goes to them as well. Thank you very much, and if I'm not, if there's nothing else, we'll now move to announcements. Madam Speaker Potempori, I believe you have an announcement for them.
Thank you for the acknowledgement, Mister Chair. So this announcement is with regards to the photo shoot. So once again, the photo shoot of the DP Blast will be on October eighteen, that's on a Saturday, and perhaps if it's alright with the Assembly, we can vote right now on the time for the all reps photo shoot. If that's okay, since if we do it maganda in the GCK, it might take a longer time for all the reps to respond. Pero if you guys want a GC report, I think it's alright. So, yes, we'll vote on the all reps photo shoot time right now, and another announcement is that on the nineteenth, that will be Sunday, that's our last session for the Assembly, so that will be our SEM under session. So, we will also be wearing Filipiniana on the October nineteenth, if there are no contention from the floor. This is to commemorate the end of the semester, and we will be having a tiny, a mini celebration in the Assembly, so that will be a little surprise from the officers. So, yes. So on the eighteenth, Filipiniana, and also on the nineteenth, during our session, we'll be wearing Filipiniana.
Madam Speaker Potempori, how do you wish we go about the voting?
For that, I believe we can have a few suggestions from the floor on the time for the all reps photo shoot, and then we'll vote on the options.
Majority Floor Leader, you recognize?
Thank you for the recognition, Mister Chair. I'd just like to inform the Assembly now on the eighteenth, we have our variety show for our major subject, and it's our final, meron na siya mong final exam, since wala may final exam. So, for that subject, so supposedly, kwan siya, one PM must start, but I'll clarify nalang again with my classmates, because they mentioned meron na available ang venue, so basin ma-change. But if ever, pwede siya like morning or noon time ba ang all reps na shoot?
So, is this a proposal for eleven thirty? Madam Majority Floor Leader?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we have first option, Mister Chair, eleven thirty AM.
Seven thirty AM. Okay, further options? So far, we only have one option, which is eleven thirty AM. Anything else? Anything from the Minority Floor? Okay. Representative Macarubo.
Thank you for the recognition, Mister Chair. I would like to suggest a bit earlier time being ten thirty. As Alex and I also have class in the afternoon of Saturdays.
Speaking as a graduate school student, I also do have class immediately at one o'clock, so I would, so I am inclined to agree there, but that's just me speaking as graduate school, not as a speaker. So, okay, ten thirty is another option. Further options, Representative Lopez.
Thank you for the recognition, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, I would like to suggest one PM. As for my reasoning for that, we have classes in the morning for IRS.
Okay, one PM. Representative Hamara.
Mister Chair, I would like to rec, sorry, I lost my English. Uh, suggest eleven AM as I have classes that that are in the morning and to accommodate the law reps and graduate reps as well that have classes at one.
Okay, so our options right now are by order of by earliest to latest, we have ten thirty AM, eleven AM, eleven thirty AM, and one PM. Are there further, are there any other suggestions?
Mister Chair, is it possible to suggest another date?
Um.
Since the venue will be in the amphitheater, I think it would be alright to suggest another date.
But how about the nineteenth, Mister Chair?
Hmm.
Are you suggesting before the session? Yes. Representative Hamara, yes.
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker Potempori, if I may, I think it's best if we leave the discussion of this. We can discuss this later in probably the group chat immediately after this session, so we don't have to air out our internal discussions here in the live stream, if I may suggest that. Okay, so is that, is that okay with you, Madam Speaker Potempori?
Yes, so just to finalize everything, once again, our photo shoot will be on the October eighteenth, and then I will be sending out a scheduling sheet where the colleges will input the time for when their individual photo shoots will be. That's a twenty minutes slot for the smaller colleges and thirty minutes slot for the bigger colleges, so that scheduling sheet will be sent out. And once again, the Ataris Filipiniana and for the October nineteenth as well, Ataris Filipiniana for our last regular session for the semester. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Okay, thank you. We'll be putting a pin on that discussion for now, and we'll continue it later on in private with the Assembly reps. And with that, no further announcements that the Chair can think of, so with that, we'll now proceed to our adjournment. Representative Azova.
Thank you for the recognition, Mister Chair. I move to adjourn the seventh regular session.
Second.
Properly moved and mass seconded. The current motion now is to adjourn the seventh regular session of our Student Assembly. All those, are there any objections? Chair is none. With that, our seventh regular session is hereby adjourned. Thank you, Representatives. We'll now proceed to our closing ceremonies.